Good evening. Welcome to the Lompoc City Council Meeting. This is Tuesday, April 3rd, 2018. It is 6:30 PM. If you have not done so, if I could remind everyone to silence their cellphones. Madam Clerk, we have roll call, please.
Councilmember Vega.
Here.
Councilmember Starbuck.
Present.
Councilmember Mosby.
Present.
Mayor Pro Tem Janelle Osborne.
Here.
Mayor Bob Lingle.
Here. If you'll please rise, remove your hats, and join us with an invocation by Chaplain Dale Willis.
Father, we come before you right now on behalf of this city council meeting, Lord. We ask you for blessings, wisdom, courage, and stamina, Lord. Lord, we ask for your special blessing upon our police officers and those new officers, Lord, that you will bless them with judgment and bless them as they are learning, Lord. Give them wisdom as they carry out their duties. Our police and our fire, Lord, all of the first responders. We just ask you to plant your angels with them and protect them. And, Lord, for our youth, the things that we see going on in our country and things that we see going on around the world, we just ask for your protection upon our youth as they go to school. We just finish the every fifteen minutes in Lompoc High School. We see what kind of tragedies can happen. So, Lord, we just seek you. And, Lord, we ask your special blessing on the Flower Festival that's coming up, Lord, and for the queen candidates and the experiences that they will go through, that you will bless them with special memories that will last them for the rest of their lives. Lord, bless this city council. In Jesus' name we pray. Amen.
Amen. Please remain standing and join me in the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. Please be seated. Okay, on April 2nd, I presented a proclamation here at City Hall declaring 2018 as Child Abuse Awareness Month. Also this week, I presented another proclamation for child sexual assault here at City Hall. So tonight, we have, we're gonna have a little, I think, exciting thing. We're gonna have a presentation by Cabrillo High School senior Caitlin Chewie. Caitlin, would you like to come up and explain what we're gonna see?
Hello. Okay. Hi, everyone. My name is Caitlin Chewie. And before I begin, I would just like to thank the members of the city council for having me here today. I'm super excited to tell you guys about this project that I just finished. So I'm a senior at Cabrillo High School, and I'm seventeen years old, and I'm currently running for Flower Festival Queen. My sponsor is the Kiwanis Club of Lompoc, and their mission is to support the children of the world. And so with my candidacy, I've been working a lot about promoting the town of Lompoc and just becoming more involved in the community. And so the project that I just finished, that I'm very, very proud of, is I revised the old Lompoc song, the Big L Song. And it was made in like the sixties, and the lyrics, they needed some like modernization. So I worked with my dad, and we rewrote the lyrics to fit like the modern time. And it was really fun. I learned a lot about the town, and one of our friends, actually, he recommended that I sing this song at all of my gigs. But we decided to take it another step further, and I actually made it into a music video. So I worked a lot with Randall Sennett, Certain Sparks, and he helped record it. And it actually took us like a lot of tries, because this song is, it's pretty hard. It has like a lot of key changes, but it came out pretty well. And so I worked with him for the recording, and I worked with Casey Farah to actually shoot the video. And it was super fun. We ran all over Lompoc, and it was super windy. But I didn't, that's the weather here. But it was cool, because I met so many people in the community, and there's so many locations and things that I didn't even know about Lompoc that I found out. And it was just cool to learn about my town and become more involved. And so without further ado, I would like to show you guys the video.
Okay. There we go.
So yeah, that was super fun, and I'm going to continue to work on more projects. Currently, I just finished writing a coloring book for our Queen premiere. We have a bippity-boppity-boo boutique in the Spring Arts at the park. So I hope to see you guys there, and I hope to see you guys at Flower Festival. And thank you again, and I hope you guys have a wonderful rest of your evening.
You know, Lompoc does have talent. Caitlin, that was wonderful. So I talked to your parents earlier, and I'm gonna have the city attorney just check, 'cause I know this was recorded, the melody was, or the melody was recorded once before. As long as there's no copyrights or anything, I'd like to be able to post this on our website just to sort of promote Lompoc if that's okay with you. So, okay? I think it'd be good for our website, so, okay. Well, again, thank you very much. It was wonderful. So, okay. And you don't have to stay for the rest of the meeting if you don't want to. I wish I didn't have to. Okay. But I do have some more exciting stuff. I'm gonna be presenting a couple proclamations this evening for some very important days and months coming up, so. Okay, if I could have someone from Sexual Awareness? Okay. Okay. It's my pleasure to present a proclamation for Sexual Awareness Month. Whereas people of all racial, cultural, and economic backgrounds fall victim to sexual assault, sexual violence, sexual violence is widespread and impacts every person in this community. Rape, sexual assault, and sexual harassment harm our community. And statistics show child sexual abuse prevention must be the priority to confront this reality that one in six boys and one in four girls will experience sexual assault before their age of eighteen. Whereas rape and sexual violence of all kinds continue to occur at an alarming rate, with California having the most reported rape in the United States, and with the Department of Justice stating that an American is sexually assaulted every ninety-eight seconds here in the United States. And whereas emotional and physical scars resulting from sexual violence are often permanent, and we must work together to educate our community about the sexual violence prevention, supporting survivors and speaking out against harmful attitudes and actions. And whereas, a coalition of organizations exist which directly confront this crisis, including North County Rape Crisis and Child Protection Center, law enforcement agencies, churches, healthcare providers, and volunteers from the community that serve these agencies who are helping in the effort to end sexual assault. And whereas, prevention is possible with everyone, if everyone gets involved, the first step is increasing education, awareness, and community involvement. It is important to recognize the compassion and dedication of the individuals involved in this effort. Applaud their commitment and increase public understanding of this significant problem. And it's important to recognize the strength, courage, and challenges of the victims, survivors of sexual assault, and their families and friends as they struggle to cope with the reality of sexual violence. Now therefore, I, Bob Lingle, Mayor of City of Lompoc, do hereby proclaim April as Sexual Assault Awareness Month, a full month of recognition and activities promoted by the North County Rape and Child Protection Center to increase awareness of sexual assault and to create solutions and encourage all citizens to participate in the efforts to eliminate sexual assault violence in our city. Thank you very much for what you do.
Thank you very much.
Okay.
Thank you very much, Mayor and the city council and the members that are, city that are here. My name is Allison Wales. I'm the Associate Director at the Rape Crisis and Child Protection Center. And I would just like to thank the city members that came and the council and the mayor that came yesterday to our pinwheel planting that we had in Lompoc for Child Abuse Awareness Month. We will have another one tomorrow in Santa Maria and then solving. We're spreading the awareness over a thousand pinwheels in the North County regarding abuse. And it is so very important to have a visual of what all the abuse that does occur and the resources that are in our community regarding assault and abuse and how we can combat all those issues. I'd also like to say, as far as the awareness of one in six boys, the center will be focusing a lot this year on the fact that we have a lot of little boys that are being abused that we don't see the numbers on coming forth. We serve in our Child Safe Program over eleven thousand students in the North County in our Child Safe Program. And with that, we get dozens of reports every year in the school regarding abuse. And just recently, the last few months, we've had a couple of those cases actually come to trial with guilty verdicts, and many more where you don't even hear about the fact that people have pled guilty because of the reports that have come forth because of child abuse. We don't have enough of those boys coming forward. Little boys are being hurt. And so this month, we're starting a major push and making everyone aware of that fact. And a lot of little boys are hurt before the age of ten, and quite violently. So it's not just our little girls, it's our little boys, and it affects our, a whole society with domestic violence, with drug abuse, and a lot of other bad things. So please be aware of that and pay attention to activities on our Facebook, things that are coming up. And thank you for your support in the community. Thank you.
Thank you, Allison, for everything you do. Next, I want to do a proclamation for Equal Pay Day. AAUW? Yeah? Okay, this is a proclamation for Equal Pay Day. Whereas, more than fifty years after the passage of Equal Pay Act, women, especially minority women, continue to suffer the consequences of unequal pay. And whereas, according to the U.S. Census Bureau, women working full-time, year-round in 2017 typically earn eighty percent of what their men earned, indicating little change or progress in equal pay. And whereas, according to graduating the pay gap, a 2007, 2012 research report by the American Association of University Women, the gender gap, gender pay gap, is evident one year after college graduation, even after controlling for factors known to affect earnings such as occupation, hours worked, and college major. And whereas, in 2009, the Lilly Ledbetter Fair Pay Act was signed into law, which gives back to employees their day in court to challenge a pay gap. And now we must pass the Paycheck Fairness Act, which would amend the Equal Pay Act by closing loopholes and improving the law's effectiveness. And whereas, according to one estimate, college-educated women working full-time earn more than half a million dollars less than their male peers over the period, over the course of their lives. And whereas, nearly four in ten women, more than four in ten mothers, are primary breadwinners in their households, and nearly two-thirds are primary or significant earners, making pay equality even more critical to families' economic security. Whereas, a lifetime of lower pay means women have less income to save for retirement and less income counted towards Social Security and their pension benefits formula. And whereas, fair pay equality policies can be implemented simply and without due costs or hardship in both the public and private sectors. And whereas, fair pay strengthens the security of families today and eases future retirement costs while enhancing the American economy. Tuesday, April 10th, symbolizes the time in 2018 when the wages paid to American women catches up with the wages paid to men from the previous year. Now therefore, I, Bob Lingle, Mayor of City of Lompoc, California, do hereby proclaim Tuesday, April 10th, 2018 as Equal Pay Day. In the City of Lompoc, and urge all citizens to encourage equal pay for women.
Thank you, Mayor Lingle. I'm Pat Grahalvin. I'm currently President of the Lompoc Vandenberg Branch of the American Association of University Women. And AAUW has been empowering women as individuals and as a community since 1881. So for over a hundred and thirty years, we've worked together as a national grassroots organization to improve the lives of millions of women and their families. Tuesday, April 10th, marks Equal Pay Day, the symbolic day when women's earnings catch up to men's earnings from the previous year. The typical woman working full-time year-round in the United States is paid just eighty cents for every dollar that a man is paid, which means she has to work until April 10th, 2018, to be paid as much as a typical man took home by December 31st of 2017. So every woman deserves a full paycheck. So thank you, Mayor Lingle and the city council, for recognizing the pay gap and for your work in continuing to eliminate it. Thank you.
Okay. Public Safety Telecommunicators Week. Do I have anyone from? Ah. We have a representative. Okay, this is proclamation, National Public Safety Telecommunicators Week. Whereas, the Congress and the President of the United States have designated April 8th through the 14th, 2018, as National Public Safety Telecommunicators Week. And whereas, when an emergency occurs, the prompt response of police officers, firefighters, and paramedics is critical to the protection of life, preservation of property. And whereas, the safety of our police officers and firefighters is dependent upon the quality and accuracy of the information obtained from citizens who telephone the communication center. And whereas, public safety telecommunicators are the single vital link for our police officers and firefighters by monitoring their activities by radio, providing them with information, and ensuring their safety. And whereas, public safety telecommunicators have contributed substantially to the apprehension of criminals, suppression of fires, and treatment of patients. And now therefore, I, Bob Lingle, Mayor of City of Lompoc, California, do hereby call upon the citizens of Lompoc to observe National Public Safety Telecommunicators Week, to recognize and appreciate the vital role that the City of Lompoc Safety Dispatch plays in keeping the city safe, and do hereby proclaim April 8th through the 14th, 2018, as National Public Safety Telecommunicators Week.
Mr. Mayor, Council, thank you for this recognition. I am Sergeant Kevin Martin with the Police Department. I've recently taken over supervision of our dispatch center. And I can't share enough with the council, the mayor, and the public what an amazing group of people work in the dispatch center. A very high call volume, a very stressful situation, and twenty-four-seven, they're out there and doing their job to the best of their ability to keep this community safe. So thank you for the recognition. We appreciate it.
Gosh, he's got a big hand. All the better to catch you with, I guess, right? Proclamation. Okay, do we have someone from library here? Ah, here we go. Okay, this is proclamation, National Library Week 2018. Whereas libraries are not just about what they have for people, but what they can do for people. Whereas libraries have long served and as trusted and treasured institutions, and library workers and librarians fuel efforts for better, to better their communities, campuses, and schools. And whereas librarians are leaders in their institutions and organizations, in their communities, in the nation, and in the world. And whereas librarians continue to lead the way of leveling the playing field for all who seek information and access to technology. And whereas, libraries and librarians look beyond their traditional roles and provide transformative opportunities for education, employment, entrepreneurship, empowerment, and engagement, as well as new services that connect closely with the patrons in needs. And whereas, libraries and librarians lead their communities in innovation, provide programming and access and training to the new technologies. And whereas, librarians are pioneers, supporting democracy and effective social change, with the commitment to providing equitable access and information for all library users regardless of race, ethnicity, creed, ability, sexual orientation, gender, identity, or social economic status. And whereas, libraries lead in working for diverse communities, including people of color, immigrants, and people with disabilities, offering services and education, educational resources that transform communities, open minds, and promote inclusion and diversity. And whereas, libraries, librarians, library workers, and supporters across America are celebrating National Library Week. Now therefore, be it resolved that I, Bob Lingle, Mayor of City of Lompoc, California, proclaim National Library Week, April 8th through the 14th, 2018. I encourage all residents to visit the library this week and explore what the new library has and engage with the librarians. Because of you, our library leaders, libraries transform. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, and members of council. I'm happy to accept this, and I encourage all of you to check out the library this week and see what we have going on. It is spring break, so be aware that we have probably about an average of eight or nine hundred people every day in the library, which is pretty awesome, but also a little loud. We are also collecting food for fines this week, so if you owe any fines on your account, just bring in canned goods, and we will forgive fines in exchange for food that goes to the Lompoc Food Pantry. We have lots of great programs coming up for summer, so if you are a child, a teen, or an adult, we're gonna have a lot of fun things to go this summer. And check us out on our website. We also have Facebook and Instagram, and we have lots of good stuff going on. So thank you very much.
City Manager's Report.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, Council. At the last council meeting, council approved sending a letter to the Fourth District Supervisor regarding the reconstruction of McLaughlin Road and investigating funding for that in the future. It has since come to our attention that that also should perhaps be sent to the Third District Supervisor, since that project would indeed affect residents of that district as well. So with that in mind, we will prepare the same letter for the mayor's signature to go to the Third District Supervisor. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you for the report. Any questions? Okay, public comment on the consent calendar. Anyone want to speak concerning the consent calendar?
Good evening, council members. John Lin, Lompoc resident. I certainly want to speak in favor of extending the electric utility, how would I say it, discount for new businesses occupying vacant spaces. I'm pretty sure you're gonna do it. I am disappointed that it didn't come to the Utility Commission, so you could have our unanimous support behind it. Secondly, I want to talk about the item to confiscate excess fees with regard to the cannabis applications. Not so much the issue of whether we're confiscating those fees, but the fact that we're on that slippery slope that our city attorney has talked about so many times. And if we choose to confiscate excess fees from these folks, who will we confiscate it from next? So clearly, I wouldn't agree with that. I believe that we charge reasonable fees for reasonable services. If the fees that we're charging the cannabis folks don't cover the costs, then I would encourage all of you to create new fees that do cover those costs, and that is the process that we should move forward. Thank you.
Okay, anyone else on the consent calendar? Okay, we'll close public comment on the consent calendar. We'll bring it to the council. The consent calendar consists of items that are generally considered routine and will be passed with one motion from the council. be passed with one motion from the council unless a council member chooses to pull an item. Does any council member wish to pull an item? Councilmember Starbuck?
I'd like to pull item eight.
Okay, item eight, it was pulled, it'll be heard. I think it's just prior to the last oral communication on the agenda. Anyone else? Okay, with that, I will, Madam Clerk, just for your information, I will be voting no on item number five. Okay, with no other items being pulled, I'll entertain a motion to approve everything other than item number eight.
I'll move.
I'll second.
Been moved and seconded in a discussion. Let's vote. And that passes five-zero. Staff presentations. We have several staff presentations. The first one is Economic and Community Development Staff to announce a date of upcoming joint meeting workshop.
Good evening, Mayor, and members of the council. So back in January two thousand sixteen, we had our joint meeting with the Economic Development Committee, and we discussed our next strategic plan update. So that update of that plan happens every other year. So I did want to propose a date and time for you guys to see if that works with your schedule. So we do have twenty-two members on the committee, so I tried my best to get the majority of the members present. So the day and time that I'm looking at, that I'm proposing to you guys is Monday, May twenty-first. And the time of that workshop, it's a one-day kind of hands-on workshop, would be nine AM to two PM.
May twenty-first? Okay, I'm okay with that. Anyone have a conflict?
No, I'm good.
Councilmember Osborne, okay. Okay, May twenty-first, again, what time?
It would be nine AM to two PM. And I can follow up on location and verification of time as it gets closer.
Okay.
Awesome. Thank you, guys. Have a good evening.
Thank you. Okay, next, we have a staff presentation. Fiscal review. Here's two thousand seventeen nineteen budget. Oh, I'm sorry, no, this is Financial Services Staff will present or provide an update on financial services.
No presentation.
No presentation, just an update, okay.
Oh, so I just realized, we're about halfway through our conversion process. We started this in two thousand sixteen. We've gotten through phase one, which we started in October of two thousand seventeen, and that was the financials. Currently, we're working on two phases. We're working on the payroll modules, which includes HR. And we're also working on utility billing modules. So this week, we're working on the utility billing modules and the accounts receivable general billing items. And currently, Brad and myself have been involved this week with going over, it's a long questionnaire, it's over two hundred questions just for utility billing, of how we do things, and how it relates to how Munis does things. And so this is kind of the planning stage of this. And so it's very exciting to go through this. But next week, then, we go through our second parallel run with HR, with payroll. And we haven't gone through a complete parallel run where we take a period of time and match it up exactly, and we found out that we're a very complicated city, but we're getting through it step by step what the pay codes are. Then in July, we'll start a phase four, which will take a year, which will include work order systems, which will relate to the things that electric and streets do, that they take inventory out of our system, so that our work order system will talk to our inventory system, that will talk to our general ledger system, which is really great. Getting back to the utility billing things, it's just finding out how we can have cash sharing, when people take money over the counter, how come, and show exactly what's paid up to that minute on the utility billing system. So we're gradually working towards it. It's going to take us until July of two thousand nineteen to get this done. Payroll, we're hoping to implement that either July first or October first, because we have to do it on quarterly system. But our goal is to go July first. So in June, we'll be training, if all things go well, we'll be training the rest of the staff how to do the time sheets electronically, and hopefully get through that. Be glad to answer any questions you guys might have on it.
Any questions? Councilmember Mosby?
So the three-by-five cards you're using for utility billing, those will soon go away? Is that what you're saying?
In a year's time, approximately. We're hoping that we'll all be integrated, we can scan those things in, we can have, oh yeah, it'll be a lot better, so.
Treasury will be happy, right?
I hope so. But it's a lot of hard work, and I can't say enough for how hard this staff has worked trying to get things outlined, and we just appreciate your support.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, any other questions? Okay, thank you. Okay, and now we'll have staff present a review of the fiscal year's two thousand seventeen
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, Council. Teresa Galavan, interim City Manager, and Dean Albro will be giving the presentation, but I just wanted to share a few things with you before he gets into the details. So today's mid-year budget update will give you an estimate of where we'll end the general fund fiscal year seventeen eighteen budget, this fiscal year's budget, and the two-year seventeen nineteen budget, as well as trends to be aware of in city operations, the budget, and the economy. So he's going to go over those things. And given that we're going to end this fiscal year with a deficit largely due to revenues coming in below forecasted amounts, and we anticipate a shortfall in fiscal year eighteen nineteen as well, we recognize the need to do a mid-cycle budget adjustment. So we intend to bring a mid-cycle budget adjustment to put the general fund on track to close the budget gap by the end of the seventeen nineteen cycle. Our plan to come back to you would be in June with a budget adjustment, reducing both revenue and expenditures. And Dean can give you greater insight into this. So I'll turn it over to Dean Albro.
Good evening. As outlined this evening, I'm going to talk a little bit, I know the request was a mid-year update, hoping that I can talk a little bit about the current economy, and how I think it's going to affect Lompoc. Look back a little bit, talk a little bit about the ten-year history of the general fund, and then we'll go over some actuals on two thousand seventeen, and then finish up with the mid-year review on two thousand eighteen. So overall, the economy is looking pretty good. We got unemployment, it's the lowest numbers we've seen in a while. Housing's booming, it looks like we had a good recovery. There's no bubble. Stock market's doing great, except for this quarter, seems like we had a little pullback there. Auto sales are up, even the European market's doing pretty well. So overall, the economy looks good. We do have some challenges. We have our retirement obligations, entitlements. One thing that I'm noticing, and I did some work on this a couple of years ago, and saw that we had about sixty-seven percent of our staff that could retire in ten years, and that's like the tail end of the baby boomers. I think that we're going to see a little bit of shortage of skilled labor. There's not a lot of people behind those baby boomers. I think that's going to trail down to the overall economy with a lower GDP. I also think it's going to trickle down to a shortage of houses in the mid and high, larger houses, if you will. You're starting to see the Fed increase rates. That's concerning me a little bit. I think that's the unemployment numbers. We're also seeing a reduction. I think everybody thinks the economy's doing good, so they're depleting their savings. A little bit of a concern. Do I see a housing bubble? I mean, a market bubble? No, I don't think we're going to have one in probably the next four years. I think we'll be good. I've been saying ten years, but I think I'm seeing a few things that, a little concerned, we'll have to wait and see type. So as we look back at the general fund, you can see where our fund balances going. You can, to me, what concerns me is you look at two thousand and seventeen, our unassigned fund balance is getting pretty short. You can see the green line where we actually did some funding on the lease proceeds, but I'll get into that. This is probably the best slide of my presentation. Every single revenue line since the, you know, two thousand and ten has just been up, 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 and two thousand eighteen, we're seeing the same thing. So if we look at two thousand seventeen, what happened? In this slide, I'm presenting the original budget. When we come to you, we bring you a balanced budget. And in the next column, I'm bringing you the actuals, and then you can see the variance. Really, if we take one-time anomalies out of the equation, we lost close to three-point-two million dollars last year. Just to go over what happened in the one-time transactions, in two thousand fifteen, we took general fund funds, and we put it in the insurance fund to fund our compensated expenses. We thought that was too aggressive, and we pulled it back this year, two thousand seventeen, and went to a more pay-as-you-go. We also did a one-time adjustment to payroll. If you see there, it says between the twenty-third and the thirtieth. One of the generally accepted accounting principles is that we match our expenses to our revenues. So basically, that's just a realignment of those days, those seven days at the end of the year. That'll happen one time and one time only, but it makes the budgetary and the transactions match better, and it's what you're supposed to be doing. We also had seven hundred fifty thousand in lease proceeds, and we also had a special item where we moved some of the rec funds from the enterprise funds to the enterprise, I mean, excuse me, from the enterprise funds to the general fund. That being the revolving rack, the Dewey Center, the campground, and the aquatic center. And that's the minus one ninety-one. So if you see in the CAFR, you'll see that we had actually a negative eight fifty-seven, but, and when it comes to what was the actual operating plan on the movement, it was closer to three-point-two million. So we look at our revenues, what happened. Keep in mind that we project our taxes in two thousand fourteen for the two-year cycle, so to be off about one-point-six, like you see up there for the property tax, sales tax, that's kind of, it's not too bad. We really didn't have the build-out. You can see in the next two lines right there, we didn't have the build-out that we anticipated. The revenues from other agencies, that's a good number right there, eighty-nine thousand, that's a grant going to police. We also had some asset recovery where the police bought a vehicle. We didn't really see the sale of property that was in the budget. It was five hundred thousand in the budget. We didn't really see that. The last line, you'll see the road fund transfers. That's going to be offset by, I'll go to the next slide, that's going to be offset by, right there, the street funds. We budget too much revenue, too much expense, so that way if we get extra revenues, we can actually do complete projects in the streets. If you go down three lines, you'll see the salary savings of five hundred and thirty thousand. Our goal is to try and offset all the positives and all the divisions against that. That's where we house it, because we don't know where the vacancies are going to be. We did have a little overage on a fire for overtime. That's something we're working on. But in essence, that's what two thousand seventeen looked like. This next slide, what I did is I'm taking your revenues on the left and your expenses on the right, and I'm netting them. So what do I mean by netting them? What I mean by netting them is I'm taking the gross expenditures, I'm backing out any user fees or special revenues, and the only division I'm going to back that out of is building inspection and planning. It's because we're allowed to collect a reasonable borne cost for the services they do. So I'm netting those divisions out. I'm also taking out all the administrative service charges through the capital, I mean, sorry, the cost allocation plan. So that will be the general government. That'll be your admin. And if you see, you can look, it's kind of hard to see, but you can see right, the general government, most of that's allocated out to other funds. Matter of fact, the gross is closer to eight million. And I think this is important, as you as council members and the mayor, to look at, because then you can actually see exactly what every division is costing the general All right, two thousand eighteen. Two thousand eighteen looked a lot better. Again, we're doing the original budget, and then this will be actuals, I mean, I'm sorry, this will be estimate instead of actuals, and our variance is above a million. And I'll go through those right now, show you those. We're doing really good with our tax revenues. The property tax, oops, I hit the wrong button here. Property tax and sales tax, that's a great number. I love seeing that right there. The TOT, we really didn't, we really haven't seen a reduction in TOT. We just, the Hilton Garden just came on a little later than we anticipated in our budget. But overall, our taxes are doing great. We're still not seeing quite the build-out that we anticipated. We also didn't see the sale of property there down at the bottom. Santa Barbara County is still using our jail, but we've not seen as much revenue as we did when we had a contract, so we're expecting that to come in a little lower. And again, the street transfers will be offset, again, when we look at our expenditures on the bottom line there. I'll go to the next page, right there. This, again, same thing. We put our salary savings in a non-departmental line. We hope all the positives will offset them. We're still seeing a little bit overage on the fire. In this budget cycle, we actually had three fire positions that we were hoping to fill, I mean, to hold through attrition. They just haven't happened. Good for them for keeping their man. So this next thing I want to talk about was, how do we compare to a typical city? A typical full-service city with police and fire? And one of the things I turned to was Michael Coleman's work with the League of Cities, and he took the state controller reports, and he did just what every city's averages And what I did is I applied those averages, and you'll see in blue where I took what we had as revenues, and what we would have applied those revenues in a typical city. And you can kind of see on the end, we spend a lot less on streets. That was kind of interesting. But of course, the first thing that sticks out to me is how much we're spending on public Matter of fact, if you look at that graph by Michael Coleman again, you'll see that sixty-five percent of the discretionary revenue is spent on public safety. If we put that line on our net for two thousand eighteen, now this is the net of two thousand eighteen, just like I showed you earlier with two thousand seventeen. And you can see at the top, we're using a lot less reserves. Keep in mind, too, that sixty-five of the discretionary, percent of discretionary is equivalent to about, for our city, eighty-two percent of tax. The reason why I bring that up is if you look at, the first thing that came to my mind is, were we ever a typical city? And if you go back to oh-seven and oh-eight, you can see right here, that's about eighty-two percent of tax. So we were. And you can see what happened after the recession, when we lost our revenue line. We did a good job of keeping our expenses down. And then our revenue started going up. We thought things were good, and the expense line kept going up, but our revenue line didn't. You see in two thousand and twelve, we'll go back to that fund balance, and see what it did to the general fund fund balance. I'll go back one more time. And you can see where we got some grant funding. I'm going to go back again. And you'll see the fund balance comes back. And then finally, you can see where in two thousand seventeen, where CalPERS changed all their assumptions, and our costs are just exceeding our revenue lines. And you can see what that did to our fund balance. But overall, from two thousand seventeen to two thousand eighteen, we saw some really good movement on our revenues. We actually saw a million-dollar increase in taxes plus. That's important. That's how we run police and fire. We saw a decrease in our expenditures by one-point-four, a total net positive variance of two million. So how did we get that expense line down? So how'd we get that expense line down? We're holding a lot of vacancies right now. You can see where they, they land right now. That's all I have. Thank you. If you have any questions, I'm here for you guys. Any questions? Councilor Mosby?
If, as we proceed through, if expenditures are gonna exceed at the department level, what we've allocated, is there a time when we're supposed to come back and do adjustments?
Well, I think really the thing that we should be doing if we're having a division or department that's running negative, move money around, try and balance it, or do something to take care of that situation before coming to you. But yes, that's ultimately what we should do if we can't get, if we can't take care of it.
Is watching what the county does, when they have something like that, they bring it back to the supervisors so that they do the adjustments. I mean, is that something that should be, you know, looking?
I, I know that we're, we're gonna need to do some adjusting, that's why Teresa brought that up, the city interim city manager. I know that we need to do some adjusting, and that's something that we need to work on. And you, you saw that in the CAFR, I mean, we saw some divisions that were negative. They probably, they shouldn't be, we should be coming back to you guys. I also would like to try and work on doing what I just showed you this evening, where I'm showing you the original budget, and how we performed against that original budget, and that's on that budget-to-actual section of the CAFR.
And I, and I guess the reason why I ask this, 'cause we go through, we work meticulously to get a balanced budget, and we, we establish numbers, we set limits. I think that's what we're doing, when we do a budget in departments, we set limits. So what allows us to spend, or this, the city hall to spend more than what the limit is? When we set the department level at a certain number, what allows, I mean, to exceed? In the CAFR, we did, in one department, went over 928,000. I know that was a bit of accumulation from the year before, but what allows, well, in this case, the city manager to spend 928,000 above a limit that council had set?
We should never exceed appropriations, I mean, that's, that's a given, but I think what we really need to do is try and move the money around if we need to, or come back to council and ask for money to, to cover a certain area. Actually, the best thing is if you budget from the beginning, I mean, in a perfect world, you know, how do we perform? That's why I didn't take the modified, 'cause there's supplemental appropriations in our budget, but I took that all out, 'cause I really wanna know, how did we perform against our original budget that we brought to you when it was balanced?
And, and I guess what I'm getting at is, 'cause in a real world, when you, when you hit and exceed your limit, you're out of money. You don't just keep spending, and in this case here with one department, went 928,000 above what the council limit had set, and I'm just, i- is there a way that we can stop something like that happening? Is there a red flag that comes out? Is there a mandate that, that the city manager comes back to the council and says, "Hey, I need more money," or do we just, I mean, what I'm getting at is, why, why do we go through this whole budgetary process if we're allowed to spend nearly a million dollars in one year over?
I, I think what I'm trying to say is, if you look at the expenditures we, we didn't go over, and that's actually one of the areas that we didn't go over, we were actually coming up with shortfalls on the revenue side. So yes, yeah, I agree with what you're saying, we definitely should not go above our appropriations.
Well, at the department level, we did go over.
You sure did, yeah.
And that's what I'm getting at, what, what is it? Do we need a policy that states as such? Or is there already something there, and we violated a policy exists? I mean, what happened? I mean, that's what I'm getting at, we, I believe that when we get to that level, the department level, and something's exceeding, you know, the red flags and the bells should be going off, and we should get to an adjustment. We should just roll into, six months after the money's been spent, we get an audit report out, says, "Oh, hey, I went a million bucks over in this one department." I mean, i- is there anything that you know of, any policy that we have that can?
Other than what's in the, the, our, yeah, our policy that's in the budget book, I mean, so that's something we'd like to expand on too, when we come in with your budget book, we don't have policies and procedures in the budget book that we're, we're gonna follow. Yeah, that, in a perfect world, that's what we should be doing, you're right.
Well, in, and then, you know, going back and reading, you know, the audit report, it says expenditures may not legally exceed appropriations at the department level. And that's page 80 of the audit report, I mean, what does, what does that mean? May not legally exceed appropriations at the department level?
If I may, back up a little bit, your question about what are we doing now going forward? One of those things that we're doing now was part of the presentation that was done by Melinda before this presentation. The implement, implementation of the MUNA system has provided a significantly more advanced framework of managing costs. So as we go forward to get the payroll side implemented, we have, on the accounts payable side, if somebody is wanting to spend money out of an account that doesn't have money in it, the system will just stop that until the department finds a place to fund that. In the past, that old, our old legacy system did not do that. So we had some instances where departments were overspending in certain individual line items, but in total, except for the fire department, they're all under budget, and a significant amount of that is typically from vacancies. So that's one thing that we're doing prospectively going forward, is that the system we're implementing is putting controls on the spending of operational costs. What we need to do, and what Dean alluded to, is that in a typical budget process, a budget that has a GFOA-approved budget with several components to it, one of those components is a whole entire section of the various policies that go into the budget. I prepared one of these back in 2014 to go into the budget, and when we go, start working on the seventeen, the 1921 budget, I would, I will recommend to the city manager that we include that in the budget document itself, so those policies that you're asking about will be incorporated in, into the budget itself, the budget documentation. So it'll be there, right there going forward. And I agree with Dean that we have had some shortfalls on that reporting in the past, but we're looking at methods to address those going forward, and that, the, the budget policies that I put together were probably in excess of 50 pages, so it wasn't just one little policy, it was a comprehensive review of our whole entire process to make sure we have reserves for worker's comp claims, for liability claims, for long-term debt. So it's, it's a very comprehensive set of policies. I, I have to admit, I borrowed them from the city of San Luis Obispo, which has a very well-received and well-documented budget process. So I, I wasn't creating something from scratch, but I also was making sure it was, is tailored to our city, and not just a generic policy for some general city. So I think we have significant building blocks to make the 1921 budget process, which is just a few months down the road, a much more comprehensive policy document that will address some of those concerns that you have, and we can put those into writing.
I guess one of my concerns that I have right now is historically, I mean, at what time was staff aware that in one department, we were getting close to a million dollars over budget, and why didn't staff come back for a budget adjustment? Because we spent a million dollars of the people's money that wasn't allocated in to that department during the whole budget process. And I guess what I'm asking is, at what time did you know this, and why wasn't there a process at this time to come back for a budget adjustment so that we didn't end up 928,000
So my understanding is that we have not done budget adjustments in the past, and correct me if I'm wrong, Brad, but this is, so we are suggesting right now to bring you one next month for this budget cycle, realizing that we'd like to share with you where we're at, and bring this budget cycle on course to, to end the fiscal years 17 through 19 on target. So, you know, I can share with you that it wasn't something that was done in the past for whatever reason, and we are trying to bring forward practices that will give you more up-to-date information.
I mean, in the one department here, it's, majority of that is, is labor, so I mean, I think we're in pretty time with the computer on labor, aren't we? We don't have, payroll's on time, I'm assuming, so labor is on time, I'm just, I, I, you know, we spent a lot of time going through the budget process when we put limits, it just seems like we wasted a, a whole lot of time doing this if nobody's gonna adhere to the limits we put forward. And I don't, a-again, we do have a statement in here, I'm not sure where, where it comes from, it says expenditures may not legally exceed appropriations at the department level, and it seems like we, when it gets something...
And I do think one other thing that went against that amount that we were sharing that was over was another department being under, so ultimately, there being a bounce achieved through that. I don't know if that was the thought process, but there may be some ways to interpret the municipal codes that ratify that as well. Just giving more information and perspectives.
Yeah, and I went back and looked at a number of the audit books, and went back to budgets all the way to '93 and '95, and we haven't had quite this level of upside-downness. I mean, this is, again, I mean, I don't know whether you guys' hand are tied, or you need more from us as policymakers to put some serious teeth in this, because I guarantee, if people aren't getting paychecks, and we're getting close to that, people are gonna be very concerned. And, and it, it makes you guys in a precarious situation if we're on a slippery slope, and we just keep burying it deeper without fixing it. You know, you guys need, need some help, it looks like, with some, and is that some of the, the policy you're talking about coming down, Mr. Wilkie from San Luis Obispo? Some of that'll help? Is that?
I really do think so, and because it will be part of the budget document, assuming that that's something that, because the budget document's not, not mine, it's the, the city administration department, so I'll make a recommendation that that become incorporated into it, but it, it would be something that would have to be vetted during the, the budget process, both by city management as well as the city council.
I guess if we can, you know, do all the work we want up here, and give you a balanced budget, if something just blows through like that, it doesn't matter. And, you know, one, one other question here, on the operating transfers in, in the audit report, you were $2 million less than what you anticipated, what, what was that, Mr. Elder?
Actually, that's an error on that report. When we do the actuals, and we combine it, we eliminate transactions. For example, we take the money in from TOT, it comes into the general fund in a separate fund, Fund 17, we take it out of that fund, and we put it in the general fund. Well, on the actuals, we eliminated that transaction, and the budget, we didn't, we need to fix that.
So the $2 million, there's a number that's off in here, off by 2 million in here?
It's not really there. And that's exactly what the transfer from TOT is.
If I may, I'll add to that a little bit. Dean, can you go back to the expense page? The expense summary page for 17? So, yeah, no, you're, you're right there, the detail.
You want 18?
Yeah, whichever one, right, back, back one. The revenue side, at the very bottom, you see that Streets and Roads Funds Transfer, that $497,000 number, we, as, just keep in mind that the Streets and Roads program is funded from multiple sources. So it has a little bit of general fund, Measure A, TDA funds, gas tax funds, and some others. That program effectively incorporates urban forestry, streets, and a fairly good portion of engineering. We budget that at full staffing, just like we do with every other department, and in streets, was not part of the, the schedule that showed the vacancies, because that was 100% general fund, but there's approximately seven to 10 vacancies in the Streets and Roads Department. So we don't have to transfer as much money in from Measure A, gas tax, those other funding sources to fully fund Streets and Roads, 'cause if we did that, we'd be using Streets and Roads money for general fund purposes, and that's not something we can do. So that's always going to create a budget-to-actual difference, because we budget for 100% of the operations, and the management of the road funds has purposely kept streets underfunded, because we never quite know exactly how much Measure A money's going to be available for that process, so we don't wanna overspend on the road funds, just like we don't wanna overspend on the general fund. So I agree with what Dean said, but in, in addition to that, as long as we keep those vacancies, there will always be a, a significant difference in the budgeted transfers in and the actual transfers in because of that. To maintain the roughly 390,000 maintenance-of-effort requirement that general fund is obligated to pay, so.
Both.
Okay. And then just one last thing, and, and that's the $750,000 money that was borrowed was used in the last fiscal year audit report as a balance, and when we transferred it over, we, we actually, it looks like we used it again to balance the budget this year.
But that, to me, that's why I'm taking the one-time transactions out. Anytime you're doing a one-time transaction like that, it should be offset by another one. When you have revenues coming in for a lease proceed like that, they should be spent that year. So if you only have half the equation come through like we did, yeah, that's why I'm taking that out. You should always ignore those, I think, you should never use them to balance a budget.
Right, and, and what, I'm surprised it was already used in the previous year, and we used it again in the budget, so we used it, seems to be, appears to me twice.
It's in the budget once, it's in the actuals once, but to me, you should always take one-time transactions out of the budget and see where your performance measures are from that point.
But was it in the money that we, we transferred in as the starting point for this current budget?
It, it's in, it's in...
It's in reserves.
Yeah, it's in reserves. If you look at the reserve number on the...
Right, but again, we used it again to make the balance against expenses and stuff.
No, you're right, and, and that's why I took it out of the, the one-time anomalies, I took them out of the transactions, because when you're looking at how you're doing on your budget, you should always ignore them. They should be one-to-one. When you borrow money, 750,000 demolition in the pool, we should've spent 750,000 to demolition the pool. Does that make sense?
Well, I, I, it makes sense, that's what I'm, concern is we used it twice, and that's...
We got the lease proceeds in once, but we never spent it.
Dean, can you go back to the page that has...
You can see it, you can see it right here.
Yeah.
That's, that's the restricted funds from the 750,000.
Can you go back to the page that has the, the summary expenses and the summary revenues for eight, the estimated 2018? So this page is actually showing that scenario that Dean was explaining. If you look at the, the estimate column, the middle column, that's our estimated ending results for the fiscal year actual numbers for 1718. The revenue number, the 33,561 number, does not have the 750 in it. If you look at the expense number, the 34,00714, it does not have any expense number in there for 750. So our true deficit in 1718 that we're projecting for actuals is a 1.15 million dollar negative that we expect to have a pretty good shot of making up with the vacancies that we hold. That's why the 750 that's shown on below that line does not really affect that, because it's not affecting that balance. So if, if our expenses were 33,561, we would have a balanced actual for the year.
And, and I'm not talking about what you're presenting to us here, what I'm talking about is the adopted budget book that we went through, is I'm finding out that we had it in here, but we also had it in there, so we used that number twice. And I see that you cleaned it up here, so I appreciate that. But we, but in, in, in the adopted budget book, we used it again to balance the budget, and it was also in the starting number that we had, so that, we actually had 1.5 million. So I, I see that you have it cleaned up here on the table, and I'm glad we're moving forward that way. But I'm just saying...
I think the biggest concern for me moving forward is we had a 3.2 deficit last year, we got a 1.1, and we got a lot of work ahead of us. And I think, yeah, we need to come to you guys more often and give you briefings and updates. I think that is our biggest concern right now.
I thank you.
If I can just add one thing to that, typically with a budget, we look at what the beginning reserve number is for the general fund. In 15... In fifteen-seventeen and seventeen-nineteen, we did not presume any beginning number. So even though we received that seven-fifty in during fiscal year sixteen-seventeen, we did not include that as the beginning number for the budget process. We started off with zero.
I'll answer the, I was going to let it go, but I'll answer the question. On page one-thirty of the audit report, you used it in, the fund balance end of year is in there.
Counselor Vega.
Under the notation of having a shortfall as far as property sales, it seems to me that we were never going to reach that goal. I think that was a projected number based on the amount of properties that were put on the market, okay?
Yeah, again, I think that's, that's, we, in the thirteen-fifteen budget cycle, I think I might have that slide here, we anticipated, I'll back up one more, we anticipated that we would lose fund balance, but we were hoping that if we put some one-time transactions there, we could fill that pothole, basically, and get through the transaction. It didn't turn out the way we wished it would, and matter of fact, the projection now is closer to two million per year deficit. I mean, if you go back to how we're doing that, I mean, that's how we're filling it right now, is we're holding twenty vacancies, and you can see who's holding the brunt of that. That's police.
Gotcha. I think that probably should be noted here to city manager and through our council here that this may be the time for us to, whether by council request, to bring this back, this motion back to say, to decide here whether we want to continue marketing these properties or pull these properties off the market and not have a false sense of being able to fill that gap, since the projected properties that were projected to be sold, some of them were pulled off, were pulled off, such as Westvale Park. We had a couple of things that probably could have attracted a higher sales price. So if it's so noted, we may have a contract with another real estate company for doing this. I would think that, I'd like to bring something back here that says, hey, we put a hold on this before that there's any other rollover with signing a new listing agreement or whatever we have here before we have that, can make that judgment. I believe the economy doesn't support what we're trying to accomplish. So if we're going to have to do a mid-year or a budget adjustment, let's do it and be realistic.
Understood. In fact, Deputy City Manager Laura Doubles is going to bring back the, the real estate here in the near future, and the budget adjustment that we are planning to bring back does take into account some new projections or, or change those expectations on revenues in that area.
Thank you. Are we in a position here where we're going to be renewing the listing agreement with this real estate company here in the near future before this comes back to us? Is there something we can do here to actually put this on the table and bring it back as an agenda item?
The staff report will be brought forward on April seventeenth for that, and the contract for the real estate agent is expiring April thirtieth, so you guys will have the ability to decide at that point.
We'll be, we'll be able to take action on this item, right?
Yes, before the contract is renewed, if that's what you want to do.
Thank you so much.
Otherwise, it terminates at the end of April thirtieth.
Okay. Thank you so much. Thanks, Dean.
Counselor Starbuck.
As the guy that originally requested the review, I was hoping the review would include the council input. Maybe the word workshop would have been a more appropriate word. I understand that we're going to do some type of a joint review next month, then?
So we'll bring back a budget adjustment, because we can see that where, if we stay on this course, we will end, we won't end with a balanced budget. So we want to bring back budget adjustments that effectively reduce revenues and expenditures, and more specifically, continue to hold the salaries through vacancies as well as lowering expenditures, so we can get this budget cycle on course. And please keep in mind, we will be starting our next budget cycle here very soon, and I think that we're hearing from, from all of you, a need to have more workshops about, and we know we have very hard decisions coming up in the next budget cycle, that, that we need to get your feedback on.
Right. Well, I mean, I'm hearing numbers like three million shortage, another one million shortage. These are out of reserves, and up until recently, we'd never got into the reserves. I have been through several of these workshops until recent years. I have a format for some of the earlier ones. I only made seven copies, because I ran out of paper and ink, but I'd like to maybe give whoever on the council would like to have them, and then staff, and maybe we could go down this type of a format again, so that will be agended and input. This was the oh-nine to eleven, a very tough budget. The ten and twelve budget was very tough also. This was the furlough times, the pay cuts. These were ideas the council put forth at that time. Does anybody on the council like to review and have a copy of this? And the rest, I'd go ahead and I'll distribute to staff here.
Thank you.
But, very important, I mean, I think it's time that the council sits down and gets into the numbers a little bit here, and not just receive the report, because it's too late now. We're four million out of our reserves already.
Okay. Thank you.
You bet.
Okay, oral communication. This is your opportunity to speak to us for up to three minutes on any item that can come before this council.
Deb Andrews, Mission Hills. I'm opposed to state control of city zoning. I urge you to inform Sacramento, La Poc will not comply with Senate Bill eight-twenty-seven or any similar legislation. Senate Bill eight-twenty-seven would shift control of residential zoning for transit-rich areas from cities to Sacramento. According to Senator Weiner, who introduced the bill, with so many Californians struggling to pay their rent, the legislature can no longer permit city councils and county supervisors to determine zoning near transit stops. Weiner's zoning change bill would allow high-density housing up to eight stories near major rail and bus stops. The bill would, in effect, affect fifty percent of single-family homes in Los Angeles. That's how wide-ranging this would be. The focus of Senate Bill eight-twenty-seven without the spin is multi-story worker housing near public transit. You can download for free the details of this plan in a one-hundred-and-seventy-six-page document titled "The Ideal Communist City." It's on the web. It goes through the bill almost line for line. It's very informative. It's where that's headed. People have no need to own property under this plan, no homes, no cars. Running a state into the ground, forcing out the middle class, tolerating schools' failure to teach reading and math effectively, tolerating an explosion of poverty and homelessness renders the citizens left behind increasingly desperate, vulnerable, and more willing to accept government, assistance, decision-making, control, and overreach. I was in Havana, Cuba in nineteen fifty-eight. Batista was deaf and blind to the plight of the Cuban people who had not yet escaped. The dire conditions in which they lived gave rise to accepting Castro, communism, and the lies that undergirded it. California is being set up to become the ideal communist state. Citizens are being played. I urge you to inform Sacramento that La Poc is a sanctuary city from state control of citizens' freedom and liberty. I urge you to work on ways to facilitate private home ownership of affordable housing in La Poc, and do download "The Ideal Communist City."
Thank you, ma'am. Next, please. Wait, wait, wait. Okay, anyone else?
Nicholas Gonzalez, resident of La Poc. I think in two fifteen, the Obama administration did a study. It was called "Why Financially Challenged Cities Matter." I came across the article sometime in the first couple of months of two sixteen, and I brought it to the council's attention. It identified several of the issues that were spoken of today. The use of one-time sale of assets to resolve budgetary issues, the trend of decreasing revenues, the increasing cost of pensions and retirement funds, and it allocated a significant amount of resources for those cities who were categorized as a financially-challenged city to get assistance from the federal government. I don't think that it ever got much, other than individual members looking into the budgetary items. I think it's high-ho time that if we're going to be dealing with such dramatic changes, that maybe it's necessary to start seeking outside resources that are available, and to not ignore plainly printed information that gives you a warning of what's down the pipe. I'm glad to see now that there's some attention being paid. Unfortunately, it's too late, and now it's going to have a significant impact, not only on the community, but on the city workers potentially, and that's a shame. Hopefully, this budget cycle, you eliminate all the fluff, get down to a reasonable budget, and get back on track.
Thank you. Next, please.
Thank you. I am talking today on item number eleven, and I'm just going to go through it since I only have three minutes. So I am not in favor of cannabis shops near the dance studios. My daughter attends one of these dance studios. I will not allow my daughter to go to that studio if this ordinance passes. That means loss of revenue for the business owner of the dance studio, and to me, that means that there's favor on the cannabis tax revenue over the business owner's revenue. If you allow this, you're ultimately saying you care more about the cannabis shop than you do the dance studio. I wish you wouldn't even allow cannabis shops in the entire city limit, like Santa Maria chose this option, and they took the high road. I applaud them for doing so. It appears, as a city council, you have favored tax dollars generated from these operations over the safety, security, and well-being of our city. If that was not the case, then you wouldn't have allowed them in the first place. I don't think you'll have a problem balancing the budget with the tax dollars you'll get from cannabis. I think it will help your budget tremendously. I don't think it's the right option, though. From what I understand, and, and maybe I'm wrong, but from what I understand, the city attorney has advised that these dance studios meet the requirement to be considered a youth center. So I would tread lightly, since your own attorney might have a future lawsuit to defend. Why would you even do something opposite of what your city attorney advises anyways? That does not seem like wisdom. I might also add that this seems to me about some other motives, such as money or tax revenue. I hope there is not a cost versus risk analysis going on here. Can my fourteen-year-old daughter play in front of the dispensary? Can she go into the dispensary? Of course not. So why allow it to be right next to her, to where she's going to go and dance and have fun? I'm sorry if this has already been done or talked about, but I also suggest a full audit and disclosure of the council members on their personal conflicts of interest in relation to the manual section B six-point-six, Conflicts of Interest. Do any council members have any possibility for economic interest? It states it is foreseeable the decision will affect the member's economic interest. I'm not saying that you do, I'm just saying that it should be looked into if the city council members have any personal gain out of this. I noticed it says "In God We Trust," when I walked inside this building, which I thought was a marvelous thing we also prayed before this meeting. The Bible says to be sober-minded. I'm not trying to change the mind of the cannabis industry or people that want to smoke marijuana, but what I do not want is someone that's not sober-minded next to my daughter when she goes to the dance studio. Recognition Week of libraries, are you going to have recognition weeks of cannabis clubs and we go and tour the facilities? I think not. I don't think we're overreaching by classifying these dance studios as youth centers. Thank you very much.
Thank you, sir. Anyone else? Okay, seeing no one rise, you got, you want to come up? If you want to speak, why don't you come over to the side here and line up?
I am a business owner here in La Poc, and I am also a mother and a resident. My daughter also goes to a dance studio that would be affected by this. I am asking you to please consider dance studios, and this, sorry, this is about item number eleven. I would also, might, please consider dance studios as youth centers as defined by the state and give them the same protections of buffer zones as other youth centers. As a La Poc business owner who is also a mother and a resident of La Poc, and the mother of a girl who goes to one of these dance studios, I believe strongly that it is important to give thought to balancing the needs of local business with the safety of our children. As a winery owner, I have had firsthand knowledge of having to work with current zoning that curtails where our winery can operate. Sometimes this can be frustrating, but the one fairly sacred concern, it is hard to argue with, is the safety of our children. Places where children learn and congregate should be well-separated from controlled substance license sites, alcohol, cannabis, what have you. Please consider giving these youth centers the full protection that they are due. Please. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Stacy Barran, and I'm a resident of Mission Hills. I'm also speaking about item eleven in defense of the dance studios being allowed to be considered youth centers. My daughters attended Angela Mill's studio, and she's, I think, she's a hard-working individual. She's got this business here, she's contributing to the community with this business. A lot of children attend the dance school, they learn, they learn discipline and hard work there. It's a good place to be. It's a business we want to support in our community, as well as the other dance centers. They're all good places. I've been to another one as well. They're all good places, and we want to support those places, okay? My daughters, most people drop off their children. They leave them, they leave the building, okay? They're, they're entrusting Mrs. Mill and her employees or any dance studio, they're entrusting the adults at that dance studio with their children, and they're not there at that moment, okay? Anything could happen, you know, we're putting dispensary, if we're looking at that, anything could happen. I'm just saying, because parents leave their children there, I think it should be included in this category of youth center, because, you know, youth centers are where youth are congregating without their parents. So it's just important to me to see that we're, I agree with the speakers previously, that we're prioritizing what is in the best interest of the community. I think even though we're putting, you know, there'll be six-hundred-yard or feet bubbles of where people can't have dispensaries, I think we can still find plenty of places to do that, and I think they should be restricted. I'm not, I'm not fully informed on all the details of this, but from my understanding, I'm not hearing, other than these zoning things, I'm not hearing about restrictions on the limit of numbers of dispensaries. You know, Grover Beach, I think, is only allowing two. I would, I'm disappointed to hear that we don't have that kind of restriction. So when I hear in a public forum, you know, on Facebook, that people are saying, well, there's not going to be anywhere to put them if you allow the dance studios. I don't think that's a valid argument, because I think there's going to still be enough space. I just would like, I wanted that heard, I wanted to ask that you please consider the value for our community. There's very few things for our children to do in La Poc, okay, and dance centers are one of them. And if you could please prioritize that over the dispensaries, I would greatly appreciate it as a parent. Thank you.
Thank you. Just a reminder, if you have, if you want to speak about anything, you can speak right now, but if you want to speak about a certain item, for instance, item number eleven, it's probably best if you speak while we're discussing it, which will be coming up soon, but you're certainly able to speak about it right now if you'd like to, so. Okay, seeing no one rise, we're going to close oral communication and go on to new business. New business is item number nine, Proposition Sixty-Nine Support Letter and Coalition Endorsement. Ms. Doubles.
Good evening, Honorable Mayor, council members, public, members of the public. cities to support and join the coalition to protect local transportation improvements that has been formed and dedicated to this initiative, which many other cities have joined as well. This effort is made in hopes to educate voters of a ballot measure known as Proposition 69 that will be on the upcoming June 2018 ballot that will better secure transportation funding for cities that is dedicated to support transportation infrastructure, road safety improvements, fill potholes, and repair local streets, highways, freeways, bridges, and overpasses. As put forth by the league, there is a statewide backlog of over $130 billion in needed road repairs, including $73 billion needed for local streets and roads. Proposition 69 will add another layer of accountability for the funds to remain only for transportation purposes by preventing the state legislature from diverting or rating any new transportation revenues for non-transportation improvement purposes. As set forth by the passage of SB 1, our city alone will realize an overall funding of $12,345,310 over a 10-year period. SB 1, also commonly known as the gas tax, established this fund, this source of funding. All cities had to put forth a list of projects to be accomplished with these funds. Lompoc's list of projects will be shown in the slide presentation that we will soon view. The funding is now threatened by the possibility of the state redirecting it for other purposes if we do not pass Proposition 69 in June to prevent it. There is also an initiative circulating that desires to stop the funding altogether by repealing SB 1. This repeal effort was initially thought of being brought forward on this November 2018 ballot, but we have just received word that the initiative for the ballot has failed. However, there still may be efforts for a repeal in future ballots that we'll also want to make the voters aware of, and how their support is needed by voting down that repeal should it arise in the future. I would now like to start the slide presentation to cover further information. So what we want to look at here is we are trying to educate the voters for voting yes to Proposition 69 and a no of any repeal of SB 1. In this June 2018 ballot measure, we'll protect the new revenues generated by SB 1 by prohibiting the legislature from diverting new transportation funds. That's Proposition 69. Ensures that the revenues can be, only be used for transportation projects, and it will not raise additional taxes and protects transportation taxes and fees that we already What is SB 1? SB 1 was a Senate Bill 1. It was called Rebuilding California: The Road Repair and Accountability Act of 2017, and it was signed into law by state legislature on April 12, 28, 2017. Known as the gas tax with an increase of 12 cents per gallon that began on November 1, 2017, it invests $54 billion over the next decade to fix roads, freeways, and bridges throughout California. Cities are using these dollars to fill potholes, resurface streets, fix bridges, improve sidewalks, expand bike lanes, complete street projects, traffic signals, and perform drainage improvements. This is a little bit small, I know, but this is actually the figures that they've put forth that our city of Lompoc will be receiving in the next 10 years. After the cycle of 2019, '20, we'll be receiving over $1 million every year. What does this mean for Lompoc? On September 19, 2017, the city council adopted Resolution Number 613617, which outlined a list of projects planned to be funded with SB 1 revenues and amended the adopted biennial budget fiscal years 2017-19 budget, this current cycle budget. The list of projects are as follows, and as you can see, we have lane line stripping, striping, sorry, stencil painting, sign maintenance, and pavement repairs, and that's basically for citywide is our location. According to a study by the American Road and Transportation Builders Association, SB 1 will have a total economic impact of $182.6 billion over 10 years. It will fund an average of 68,000 jobs annually, generating 3.3 billion in salaries for California workers each year. Safer roads with improved conditions will make driving less expensive, with drivers saving an average of $818 million per year in operating costs. There's also an economic impact to the state, to the safety benefits of SB 1 investments, estimated at $584 million of additional safety benefits over 10 years. And if they try to repeal the SB 1 on a future ballot, it will jeopardize public safety. Poor roadways were a contributing factor in more than half of the 3,623 roadway fatalities on California roads in 2016. It will stop 4,000 transportation improvement projects already underway in every community. It will make traffic congestion worse when our California freeways and major thoroughfares are among the most congested in the nation already. It will cost drivers and taxpayers more money in the long run. The average driver spends $739 per year on car repairs because of bad roads and bridges, and it will hurt job creation and our economy. Reliable transportation infrastructure is critical to get Californians to work, move goods and services to the market, and support our economy. And there's some references, if anybody would like to look those up. Staff does recommend the council authorize the support letter and endorsement as a member of the coalition, which are both attached to the staff report. By supporting these initiatives, it shows our community the importance in preserving our share of these much-needed revenues by informing the electorate of the issues at hand and the resources that may be lost without their votes. That concludes my presentation, and I am available for any questions.
Any questions for Ms. Doubles? Okay, we'll open this up to the public. You know, if the public wish to speak, speak on this item. Close public comment, bring it back to the council. Councilman Mosby.
Yeah, just some of the other sides of SB 1. On average, it causes, costs a family of four in California $779,000 of new tax. So in a town of our size, it's about $8 million a year of new tax on the people. Where we're looking at getting $1 million back to fix roads, doesn't quite balance out. There's a lot of other money going other places. Right now, we're already the, well, with SB 1 already where it is right now, we are the third, third highest taxed on fuel tax in the country right now. So when you, when you do a total calculation of what's going on, we're not getting our fair share. And what's happening, we've all heard about the governor's train to nowhere. That's what he's spent. He's taken general fund money that was going to streets and roads, being spent on trains to nowhere, and now he's asking for, well, he's got it. He's got more tax. So I mean, I can't support a $779 tax that the people didn't even get a chance to vote on that's coming out of their hard-earned pockets. It's also, it's also a regressive tax. The poorest people pay more as a percentage. Also, what wasn't mentioned here is your DMV placards are going to go up upwards, up to $175 a year for your DMV registration. If you have an electric vehicle, you're going to be $100 a year. So there's a lot of hidden taxes in here, and it's going to hurt a lot of our people. It's going to take $8 million out of our local economy.
Councilman Starbuck.
Yeah, I was going to kind of mirror this, in a sense, with the 12-cent-a-gallon tax, vehicle license fee increases. If you're on a fixed income, it's a huge hit. It's a huge hit, even if you're working. We have Measure A already, another tax that we voted on and approved, but that's obviously not enough for us. I mean, I have to ask myself, when you leave California, gas prices drop a buck 35 going into Arizona right away, and the road improves 100 percent. Ask yourself, how is this happening, and why are we going to contribute this extra $54 billion, or whatever it is, for something that we've got no benefit on? I don't see it. I mean, live within our means here.
Councilman Vega.
Laura, do you, if, if this thing doesn't move forward, do we have an avenue for, to recapture the revenue for the needs that this provides?
Well, right now, this is secured funding because it has already passed our state legislature. So we're already basically being users of the gas, and so we're paying that 12 cents. If this were to fail, basically, they could redirect those funds to other purposes. So no, there would not be a way in this respect to recapture those funds, because that was basically the tax that they allowed to be put on the gas.
Oh, the reason I'm asking this question is the gas tax is not going to be lowered because we reject it also. Is that true?
Most likely not, because the state is going to, what this, what this proposition does is it actually tries to protect those funds to continually support transportation projects. So if we vote down Proposition 69, the gas tax will probably still remain, because SB 1 is still in, you know, essence, it's already there. What would happen, though, is the state would actually come and try to redirect it to other things besides transportation. So it wouldn't be earmarked for any kind of transportation projects. They might start putting it to wherever they think they need the money better, you know, worse.
I'd like to redirect that question to Councilwoman Mosby, as far as the loss of tax revenue to the community, what the impact would be in, in light of our budget deficit at the time, and how we would recapture that so there's no added suffering to the residents of Lompoc.
Yeah, you recaptured, if the people of Lompoc have $8 million more to spend in the local economy, as opposed to being sucked up to Sacramento, redirect it how they want, you would have $8 million traveling around, and here employing more people locally. So you will see it. Will, will you get that much back in sales tax? Maybe not, but it's definitely $8 million more than the people. Now, granted, SB 1 is already passed, and I understand that Prop 69, if it passes, will help limit where they're going to direct funds, because there's, there's money going to parks, there's money to go study transportation at UCs. Half the money goes to Caltrans, a number of it goes to, I believe there's a rail component in there as well. Now, I know with SB 1, the one away down, one highway down south is going to see a chunk of money to help offset their unfunded balance of Measure A for the third lane of the 101. But my deal is, if you get in there and you mix it up with Prop 69, you're still supporting SB 1, even though 69 is trying to regulate it, which we haven't heard totally how it's going to regulate it. When they get up there at Sacramento, once they have your money, what do they do with it? But you would, what you would do is you'd hold, answer your question in short, you would keep $8 million, if SB 1 is repealed, $8 million in the people of Lompoc's pockets, $779 per, per family of four. That's the average. That's a chunk of money for a lot of people.
Thank you for your insight.
Okay, so my understanding is that passing SB 69 does not repeal SB 1. Is that correct?
That is correct, but it's Proposition 69, not SB 69.
Correct, yeah. Props, yeah, 69. So if we were voting, if we were voting tonight, supporting or not supporting SB 1, this $800 or $8 million to the citizens of Lompoc makes sense, but we're not voting on that. That, the citizens of Lompoc are going to be paying this $8 million of additional taxes because of SB 1, but that has nothing to do what we're talking about tonight. What we're talking about tonight is 69, which protects the, the money that the state is going to be giving us, and it's a matter of over $1 million over the next, well, $1 million a year over the next 10 years, averaging, yeah, 12, with $12 million projected over the next 10 years, $1.1 million to the city of Lompoc over the next one year. All it's doing is protecting that money. We're not saying we agree with SB 1 or disagree with it. So I think we're mixing, mixing apples and oranges here. SB 1, as Councilwoman Mosby said, is passed. We're not going to undo SB 1. We're just trying to protect this $1.1 million that the city of Lompoc should be receiving over the next, well, every year for the next 10 years. So I think that's important that we realize. Don't mix apples and oranges. SB 1 is gone, or it's not gone, unfortunately. It's here, and we're not voting for it or against it. Anything else? Councilman Starbuck.
Yeah, I just, I will mention that you're correct with 69, but throughout the staff report, it does support SB 1 also.
Okay, but we're, I, okay, whether it's, the staff report says it, but it has nothing to do with SB 1, so. All we're trying to do is protect the money that we will have be coming in. The citizens of Lompoc, citizens of Lompoc are going to be paying this money regardless of what we do tonight. Councilwoman Rosborn.
Ms. Doubles, given what you stated tonight, that the appeal to repeal Senate Bill 1 failed, could we remove the language about opposing the repeal, since that isn't what will actually be happening, and just state that it's in support of Prop 69? Because by what I understand in your proposition is that you wrote this at a time when it was both a protect the repeal of, but since that failed, the only thing we're asking actually would be to support Prop 69?
That is correct, and when I wrote the letter, I actually, I only had Prop 69 in it.
Okay.
But our attorney actually wanted us to put that in, because in the future, if there is an initiative to repeal that SB 1, we would also like the voters to know what that would do as well. So, but we can definitely take that out.
It's an appeal to my fellow council members who seem concerned about endorsing something they disagree with. I'm, I'm in favor of supporting the Prop 69, simply because the, the money is already being taken from us, and I don't want to see the loss of what we're supposed to get back. It's not as much as we're losing, and I'd love to not lose that much, but since it's already being pulled, we need to protect it.
I understand.
And I agree. I think if we pull our comments about SB 1, just talk about SB, or Proposition 69, we may get full support of this council.
Absolutely.
Take out any comment about SB 1, that we support SB 1.
You got it.
That makes sense.
Okay.
Yes, I would support those changes also.
Okay, so with that, I will entertain a motion.
I move to support a letter for Prop 69 and inform the coalition of our endorsement without stating the opposition to the repeal of Senate Bill 1.
Okay.
I'll second.
It's been moved and seconded. Any discussion? Let's vote. Okay, that passes 4-1. So Mr. City Attorney, I have a question for you. Since the letter is, says the city council is writing this letter to endorse, since we have one council member that is in opposition, should we change that in the letter?
I think we should, yes.
Okay, so.
We'll just make that change, as well as take out the SB 1 references.
Okay, sounds good. Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Doubles. Okay, item number 10, Discussion and Direction Regarding Policies and Release of Documents. Mr. Penone.
Thank you, Mayor. As you recall, a couple of meetings ago, you had decided that you wanted to have on the agenda an item on whether or not to adopt a policy that allows individuals to obtain the originals of documents that are going to be destroyed. So what I did is, as the staff report says, I put together a little decision-making tree for you to decide whether or not you want to do that, and if you do, then... for you to decide whether or not you want to do that, and if you do, then we'll talk about the other parts of the decision tree. As you also, I'm sure, are aware, the city, in, in light of the fact that the city is intent on making sure that the public has access to records, and in order to comply with state law, the city adopted, the council adopted a policy that includes a retention schedule of all city documents. So, even if a document is going to be destroyed, if a digital copy is made of that document, we don't bring, the staff doesn't bring to you whether or not to destroy that document because a digital copy has been preserved, and the state law allows that. What, what's, and, and the documents that instigated this request are those kinds of documents that are gonna be preserved digitally, but there was a feeling that the actual physical document itself could be of some historic value, and so the request was to bring a policy to you to decide whether or not you wanted to allow people to obtain a copy of that document that's gonna be destroyed. And I believe that if there's going to be that option, that option is, we need to set up a policy so everyone in the community is aware that there's that policy, everyone in the community has an opportunity to partake of seeking that document, and then a process to figure out if it's more than one person that wants the document to figure out how to decide who should get the document. And that's the decision tree that I was talking about. So, my suggestion is that you first decide as a group whether or not you want to have such a policy. If you do, then we'll go down the decision tree. If you don't, then we don't need to have a decision tree to go down to.
Okay, questions for Mr. Penoni. Public comment. Seeing no one rise, we're gonna close public comment, bring it back to the council. You know, my opinion is, we have everything digitally recorded and saved, right?
Not, not everything. But if, but if we, if it's something that's not gonna be digitally saved, before it can be destroyed, it has to come to you with a list of what's gonna be destroyed, and you have to approve that destruction.
Correct, okay. Councilmember Starbuck, do you have a comment?
Well, I, I'm trying to phrase the question here. I, I, I think there's people that like to get up in the morning and have the physical paper in their hand when they have their coffee, and then there's the people that get up in the morning and will do it digitally. To destroy a hard copy that somebody may want, it, it would actually save us money by giving it to them. I know that we've distributed other items that were listed for destruction to people that wanted them, just for their own records. I don't know, we post what we're going to have destroyed, it's on an agenda for the council, it lists what it is. Why couldn't, if somebody had an interest, come in and request it?
If, if it's, if it's, if it's digitally copied, it won't come to you for destruction, and no one will know that it's gonna be destroyed. But they still can obtain, they could actually obtain hard copies of something that's digitally saved because it just had to be printed out again, and then they could have a hard copy of what, what was digitally saved. They'd have to pay for the copy per page, but they could still get that hard copy if they wanted it.
Councilman Mosby.
Yeah, in understanding what copies you get that are out there, the originals themselves, some of them, I mean, I'm the one that made the request for this, and I'm one who reads some of the goofy old historical books and EIRs. When you, there's a little difference than you getting a cut of a map that used to be a map that's this big, and now you're getting it small pages. There's also, some of, some of the documents aren't necessarily all recorded because they're not mandated to be recorded. I don't know how much is in the archives, but I know, I'm quite confident I have some of the stuff that my father had collected back in the 60s and 70s that's, that City Hall probably doesn't have. And glitches can happen. What can it hurt that somebody has these hard copies in case something happens with the electronic? We've all seen skips in our electronics before. It'd be nice if somebody has some of these sitting out there, and, and what can it hurt if somebody's allowed to have something? At the library, we have book sales when we're done with books. We don't have to shred everything. We allow people, the public, to come out, and I don't, I don't see what the, what the harm is with us advertising him out there and letting people come in for a minimal amount, pick up these hard copies.
Does anyone have an idea what the cost is, is staff time to do something if we adopt this policy? Is there a cost involved in this?
I, I don't think we have an established number yet, but that's something that your, Brad Wilkie, was concerned about, and so he would need to do an analysis to see what that cost is gonna be, and he would anticipate the policy, including something that would say there's gonna be total cost recovery to the city for having to provide this opportunity.
Councilman Mosby.
What, the cost has to be bare minimum. I know there's a statement in here that staff would have to go through and erase potential notes that are on pages, but if the item was being digitized already, I think they would have already erased the, the notes on the pages.
Not necessarily, if I may, not necessarily. What would happen is it would get digitized, and then when someone requests the copy, then what happens is it's reviewed to see whether or not there's certain things that have to redacted from the copies before it's given.
Okay. Any further discussion? I'll entertain a motion. Okay, I'll make a motion that the city council does not want to adopt such a policy.
I'll second that.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded. Any discussion?
I'll make a substitute motion that we do put a policy forward and that staff come back.
That's been moved and seconded.
And I'm making a substitute motion.
Okay. Okay, go ahead.
That we do move forward with a policy so that the public isn't, is allowed to have documents that are already theirs, distributed to them should the city no longer find use for them.
Okay, do we have a second on the substitute?
I don't wanna do a second, but I wanna do a suggestion. Is there just a way we could simply put out that, a notice of destruction? Just, that's it, we just would put it on the website and say that we're gonna go ahead and, you know, digitize these certain documents, forms, or whatever, and if anybody has an interest, they could come see the clerk, or, you know, I mean, it seems like we're making a mountain out of a molehill here when it could be something very simple.
I, I appreciate that, Councilmember. The city clerk and I went through an analysis to figure out if it could be that simple, and what we came up with is, it can't be that simple to make sure that it's fair for everybody. So, what we did is we set up questions that would have to be answered, then we could come back to you with a policy if, if you want to do that.
I, I guess the statement would be, you know, it's, it's a shame that.
Mr. Penoni, just, right now, we're just finding out whether or not we're gonna have a substitute motion, so are you going to second the substitute motion? If not, then.
I guess I am if I have to get a discussion going.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded. Councilman Mosby, we're of discussion now. Councilman Mosby, you have your, you still have your light on?
Yeah, again, for the discussion on the substitute motion, I believe it's relatively simple, it should be minimal cost, and, and what can it hurt to allow people to have these historical documents, and.
Right now, we're just discussing whether or not to substitute.
Right.
So, just have a vote on whether or not to substitute the motion.
Correct, and so now we need to vote whether, because a substitute motion could become the original motion, we need to vote to decide if we want to make that the original motion. So, let's vote if we wanna do that. Okay, and that passes. Okay, so the substitute motion becomes the original motion now.
So, now we should discuss that motion.
Why, why destroy the history? Let the history lay. If somebody's interested in the history, let somebody enjoy the archives, let somebody have it. Should we happen to have a glitch electronically? Hopefully, the hard copy is still there. Some of these reports, we spent hundreds of thousands of dollars of taxpayers' monies on, why can't they stay out there in the form of hard copy somewhere? I, I would like to see, maybe the museum, maybe some other group would be interested in as well to keep these. I know some of the books that I have, The Lompoc Project, how many people have heard of The Lompoc Project? That was the Narrows Dam they were gonna have over here. I've got original, the original books that my dad had. It's pretty cool to see that 1968, they were gonna put a dam and a lake over here, but there's a lot of good history that's out there. 1978, the Economic Advisory Commission, the president's Economic Advisory Commission. I've got a copy, fortunately from Arlen Seacrest, of, of a book of that one. I don't know if that exists in City Hall anymore or not, but to see what, what was looked at us. I mean, what can it hurt to let people do it at minimal of cost?
Councilman Vega.
I would be in favor of allowing the public to have access to these documents without, with some sort of public notice. My, my concern here is that the, the space that was involved in the staff report that says for retention, where, where are these things being stored right now? And are we overloaded, and do we have another spot for them? Councilman Mosby says, hey, would, would the museum be willing to take that on, or someone else that would, or maybe even the library? I mean.
Well, a number of these books were in the library, and the library over the years has, the reference books have disappeared. I was allowed fifteen, twenty years ago, I'd, I'd give a chunk of money, and I could take a reference book out, and I was digitizing some of the stuff that is gone out of the library. The, what happened to them there, I'm not exactly sure. There's not a lot of people wanting to read some of these old EIRs, but they were there. Right now, currently, a lot of these books are on shelves in people's offices in here, collecting a lot of dust. I don't know why the, the big, it seemed to be a big hurry and a big rush in the last year or so to take some books that nobody's looked at in 20 or 30 or 40 years and having them digitized. But seeing this stuff kind of fading away is why I inquired about them. I was told of the former city manager, there would be no big deal, that I would be allowed to take them, I could put them somewhere else, and then it was decided that that wasn't allowed, and I'm finding out over the years of the past, it had been allowed, when, when it was determined that they didn't really have a value for the business work of the current city. But I think history is important, and if books are able to come out there and let, let, let it come to the public, either simple on a first-come, first-served basis, or put it out to the historical society, or, or something if they're interested in something like that, but.
Yeah.
Why shred them?
I, I think it needs to be dealt with, though, you know, timeframe-wise, and for the public to have access and maybe be able to come and get these things, and maybe it's, it's kind of a, the information's out there on where these documents are going, if they're gonna be handed out to an individual, and we still lose them, so to speak. So, what do we do here? We're actually going to redirect them to be donated to an entity where they can be found, or we, are we gonna expect them to be digitized? And, and I'm not sure that all the documents probably have value if they've been digitized, you know, as far as the originals. So, that's the question here. If we hand them out to the public, they're going to disappear anyhow.
Councilmember Starbuck has his light on.
Just a question to staff. I know that this has probably been going on already. Do we have an index of what's been digitized? Where could you go to look up what has already been destroyed?
I think we have a partial list. I'm not sure we have a list of everything that's been digitized.
So, we've already lost it.
Can I answer Councilman Vega's question that he asked me?
Go ahead.
Okay. Yes, there's an opportunity and a potential that if some private individual was holding something like that, but I believe if somebody was spending the time in doing that, they have a motivation to try to protect the history of the city. Are some of these really important for the historical society? Maybe not, they're EIRs. Fifteen or 20 years from now, or 100 years from now, looking about at the hard copy, there, there could be some value with it. I've, I've learned, just in educating myself about the history of our town quite a bit from some of these documents my father had kept. So, I, I believe there's more out here. I do, I used to come and pull a book off the shelf out here and read them periodically, then all of a sudden, they disappeared, so I didn't have the opportunity to see these anymore. It's kind of disheartening to see history kind of somewhere, and I just believe that there's an opportunity here. Why shred history?
Okay, so the motion with a second is to, the city council wants to adopt a policy, and then we'll move down, on down the tree. So, first, we're moving, we're voting on whether we're going to adopt a new policy. That's the motion and the second. And that passes 3-2. Okay, so we want to go down the tree.
So, the next question will be, is the policy to change the city's retention policy to prohibit destruction of certain documents, or to allow someone to request release of a document that is to be destroyed? The concern the staff would have with regard to this is if it's to preserve all documents, then we're always gonna have a space problem. So, the first question is, is the concept to allow someone to require, request release of a document, or to just not destroy documents?
Discussion? Councilman Mosby.
I don't believe it's about not destroying documents. I think 98% of what we have in here in this original policy is, is fine. It's when it becomes a certain documents, as in EIRs and some of the other historical, some of the.
So, so is there a consensus on the council that the concept would be, that the policy would be just to allow someone to request release of a document that's about to be destroyed? Is that the consensus of the council?
Sure. Since we're gonna retain them.
Then the next question would be, what types of documents are those that we're gonna allow people to request?
Councilman Mosby.
Obviously, anything that's confidential, they shouldn't have, or just, again, I think it'd be easier to see which ones you want to request, not, not the ones that you don't want them to request. And that would be more the environmental analyses and.
EIRs.
EIRs.
Negative declarations, mitigated negative declarations.
Yes.
Categories of exemption, that, anything related to environmental documentation?
Yes, as well as some of the economic analysis and studies that were paid for.
You mean like, like impact fee studies? Or what do you mean by?
Oh, capital, well, could have been capital improvement plans, could have been, yeah, impact fee studies. Be nice to see what thought processes were as time go through.
Counsel, if I may suggest, maybe rather than trying to do this tonight, maybe it would be better if you appointed a subcommittee to go through this decision tree and then come back to with some recommendations. That's just a, a suggestion I have. Obviously, you don't have to follow that.
Well, I think it's a good idea because a lot of thought, obviously, has not been put into which policies, and I think we could be here all night going after policy, policy. So, I think it's a great idea, having a little ad hoc committee. Councilman Mosby, I'm assuming you'd like to be on that committee?
Yes.
Do we have one more person I'd like to be on that committee? Councilman Vega, are you saying yes? Okay, so it'll be Councilman Vega and Councilmember Mosby. Okay, so then this item will come back at a future date. Okay, I know there's a lot of people looking, looking for item number 11. We're gonna take a quick seven-minute break, be back at quarter till nine. I know these poor kids, I'm sorry about that, kids, you know, you have school tomorrow? Oh, good, okay, that's good, okay. Okay, we'll be back at quarter till nine. Okay. Coming back. And now, we're going to go on to item number 11. It's a council request for the discussion on the direction whether dance studios are to be considered as youth centers. Mr. Penoni?
Thank you, Mayor. This matter is brought back to you because the council had a consensus to bring it back to you. Remember, a couple of meetings ago, the item was brought to you on whether or not dance centers should be included in the definition of youth centers. The council decided not to include it, or to include it, and then a request was brought to you at the last meeting to reconsider that, and so that's why it's here tonight. So it's really up to you whether or not you want to include dance studios as a youth center.
Okay, any questions for Mr. Penoni? Okay, public comment on item number 11.
Good evening. My name is Cynthia Macduff, and I am a resident here in Lompoc. For the past 10 years, I've spent a good portion of my professional and personal life supporting youth development. And during this time, I've come across an abundance of research that shows that when youth are engaged in after-school programming and building relationships with mentors such as dance teachers, they are less likely to become engaged in drugs and alcohol and other problematic behaviors. So by designating dance studios as youth centers, I think that we are, we should commend parents and youth for becoming engaged in these positive experiences that help them develop in a positive way during this time that's so crucial to them. Youth are going to have many, are going to face many times in their lives when they're going to have to make some difficult decisions, including whether or not to use cannabis products. And I think that a dance studio shouldn't be a reminder of some of those difficult decisions that they have to face everywhere else. Rather, it should be a place where they can go and develop their self-esteem, their confidence, their social, emotional skills with others, and not be reminded of some of the bigger challenges that are out there in the world. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Next, please. Okay.
Stan Chang, resident of Lompoc. My daughter went to the Sue Dalton School of Ballet before it became Angela's a long time ago. So when I was asked if I could support their request to have you folks consider that school, that dance schools be considered youth centers, I certainly was compelled to come and talk to you about it. So I want to commend you for spending the time to really do your due diligence to figure out what the right answer is for this thing. And I think it's three things that you're struggling with, that we struggle with. The legal matters, economic side of things, and what a heart is saying. In the legal matters, there's a definition of, that we're struggling with youth center. Is that a youth organization? Is this just a gathering place for youth? We certainly know, as has been said before, that there are many youths that gather for dance classes. When they had the recitals, what, Philharmonic Auditorium? It's been about an hour and a half with their performances, maybe 20, maybe 30 performances, youth all over the stage. So it is a youth gathering place, whether it's called, whether it meets the definition of a youth center or not. It's a youth gathering place at that studio or any other studio. The other thing is economics. Our wallets are saying, this is a boon to have this new business in town, and there's going to be a help to our city to have this new business. At the same time, you have the struggle of figuring out the fair opportunity for this other business to be there, while we already have a dance school or dance schools in the places that maybe we want to restrict this growth of this other business. You want to be fair, based on economics, but yet our wallets are saying, there's something to be gained here. And then the third thing, our hearts. Our hearts are saying, but it's about our youth, it's about our children. What do we need to do to make sure that we help protect them as well? Three matters that we have to consider, you have to consider. You know, earlier, we had four presentations in which at least two of them addressed the work that is being done with youth to sustain them, maintain them, and to help them grow. And so this is one example of youth that they are trying to sustain an aspect of our community that they want to see continue. And so I let you folks decide what is the right thing to do. Legal, economically, or what your heart is saying. Let wisdom be with you folks as you struggle with the comments and make your decision. Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Hello, my name is Shelby Wacheck, and I am from Vandenberg Village. Members of the council, I'm here today to protest the idea of building a dispensary next door to the Classical School of Ballet and promote the idea of making the studio a youth center. But first, here's a little about me. I'm a junior at Carrillo High School. I'm a member of National Honor Society, ASB, varsity tennis, and theater at our school. Now, you may be wondering what qualifies me to be speaking out against the development going next door, and it is for one reason. I'm a student. And as a student, I have seen some pretty dumb ideas. In all honesty, this is one of them. The idea of not allowing a dance studio to be a youth center and building a dispensary right next door to a ballet studio is outrageous. It essentially contradicts everything we are taught as a child. The dare to resist drugs and violence program we were given in fifth grade, TV shows that are anti-drug, et cetera. What are we to think? Seeing people going into the store promotes the idea that drugs like cannabis are okay for kids. Council, please remember, the youngest age of students attending the studio is five years old. Five. How do you expect children that young, and parents of those children for that matter, to feel safe attending a school with that location? As you may know, the California Legislative Health and Safety Code states in Chapter 6, Article 2, Section 1136 2.3, that the selling of cannabis and the rules applied in Section 1136 2.1 does not permit one to, quote, "smoke cannabis or cannabis products within 1,000 feet of a school, daycare center, or youth center while children are present at the school, daycare center, or youth center, except in or upon the grounds of a private residence." The health code also states that a person may not possess cannabis within 1,000 feet of a school, daycare center, or youth center. What is the difference between a school or youth center with kids from ages 5 to 17 and a dance studio teaching kids ages 5 to 17? Council, I ask, as a student, to think of me, think of my little sister, and think of all the other children that would be affected by the location of this dispensary. Thank you for your time.
Thank you very much. Wait, 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 no, you're okay. Okay, we don't allow hissing and booing and applause, because we want everyone to feel like the voices are going to be heard equally, so. But thank you very much. Okay, next.
Good evening, Mayor, City Council, Todd Mitchell. I'm a resident of Grover Beach. I wasn't here when this same item was discussed last month, or whenever it was. I just remind the council that, other than the distance from a K-12 school, it is, it is up to your determination to determine the distance or setback from a sensitive use. I've read in different places in state law where, you know, it's a majority of youth activities. I've read where that's determined as 50%. I've read where that's determined as 73%, and I don't know where they came up with that number. For me and the business proposal that I've submitted to the city, this actually doesn't matter anything to me. So I'm really just reminding you that, you know, you can make the decision, you could change, you don't have to allow it next door. You can do it for a distance of 100 feet is what the city of Grover Beach determined for residential, and they actually only determined that from certain zone restrictions. You could make it 200 feet, 400 feet. So it's all up to you, and I know it'll be a very difficult decision. I also have a six-year-old daughter who dances, and, you know, my son with special needs and everything. And so it is a very tough decision, and that's it. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, sir. Anyone else?
Hi, my name is Teresa Wacheck, and I'm from Vandenberg Village. Good evening, Mayor Lingul and City Council members. I have a concern about the marijuana dispensary store opening next door to a business that teaches dance to underage children. It is my understanding that children in the Lompoc School District are protected from the opening of these types of businesses that are too close to a school. For example, Lompoc Valley Middle School, only four blocks away from Classical School of Ballet, protects their children until they leave the campus. However, these same children are no longer protected if a dispensary store is allowed to build and run their business next door to this dance studio. Every year, the school district educates children that drugs are bad for them and sends them home with paperwork assignments and has them pledged to not do drugs. Opening this type of business right next door where these children dance every day is directly opposite to what we are trying to teach these children in the school every day. My other concern is that parents who may take their children out of this dance studio and possibly take their business elsewhere. This would be financially devastating to the local business who has been in the community for many years. I believe it's been open a total of 51 years in total. I have a daughter who's here with me tonight, who has been taking dance lessons from Miss Angela for the last seven years, and I hope that we can continue supporting her business without having to worry about subjecting her to a drug dispensary on a daily basis. Please continue to protect our children in and out of school and do not allow the dispensary to set up next door to a dance studio. We need to find another safe place where they can open their shop and serve the community. And please consider that Classical School of Ballet as a youth center. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Next, please.
Thank you, City Council members, Mayor. I'd like to thank the city clerk for providing my written comment tonight. Proposition 64, the way the state wrote this and it was passed, was blanketed authorization of many different aspects of things. And the state left it up to cities, municipalities, counties, to incorporate what they would like to regulate and what they would not want to regulate in their communities. In regulations of cannabis businesses, the types of cannabis businesses that we're talking about today are storefront dispensaries, which are... about today are storefront dispensaries, which are retail stores that sell cannabis and cannabis products. These stores are under intense scrutiny and have intense security to get into them. You have to pass through two doors to get, at least two doors, to get into a dispensary. You have to walk up to an counter with your identification card, and if you're a medical patient, with your medical recommendation. You then have to give that over to the receptionist that is working behind a closed security window. That person then checks the state identification card and the doctor's recommendation to make sure that they are valid. If they are valid, the person is then given access behind a closed door where there is security. That is then where they are able to make a purchase. Under no way, under no circumstance, can a child, a youth from a school, a church, or walking in the neighborhood, walk into a business which has invested hundreds of thousands of dollars and go in and make a purchase for cannabis. The only way a child can receive cannabis is if they are a medical patient under care of a doctor with their parents' permission, or they receive it through the black market of sales at schools in an alley, or because their parents are irresponsible and leave it behind for the children to gain access to. Other cities and municipalities such as Grover Beach have decided to eliminate places like dance studios as youth centers for one reason. They're not open like other businesses are all day long. A youth center such as the Boys and Girls Club, the YMCA, these are places where we recognize as youth centers, because we go, we drop our children off there, they have a few staff members that supervise a great number of people. Whereas with dance studios, you have a parent that drops off a child that goes to a class which is supervised. The class lasts an hour, it's over, and the children leave. You have the authority to regulate this.
Thank you. Next, please.
Mr. Mayor, councilmen, and women. My name is Gary Wacheck. I'm a longtime resident of the local area here, being in, coming to Lompoc in the area in nineteen sixty-nine, actually. I have vested interests. My family and I have been here all that time. I've been up in Vandenberg Village for part of that and here in town. So I'm just offering that up because also, throughout my life, I have worked as a skating rink manager around the area, and my father was in business here. You may remember, you mentioned history, the Woolworth store in town. So we have a background in business and such. Now, I know you're in a very tight position here with regards to this, because as the previous gentleman said, that you do have a lot of right and leeway with regards to this, which is what I want to point out to you again. You do have that. You have the ability to make a selection here and take this, this type of business and put it in a good area or given an area that really would, it would benefit from, in my opinion. Putting it in a place in the heart of town, for instance, next to a dance studio or adjacent to a dance studio, that doesn't, to me, sound like it's the best thing to do, first off, for the town itself, in the heart of town, but adjacent to kids, simply because at the same time, those same kids we're protecting in the schools are the same kids that are going to these after-school functions. Now, the previous gentleman said that, you know, because of the times, how often they're there. Kids aren't at school all day either. They go away. They go home at night, or they go to other events like dance studios. So that argument doesn't really play out, in my opinion. But the one thing that does is you do have the right. You are the folks that are speaking for the citizens of Lompoc and the surrounding area, in this case. And I just would like you to really consider that this is a youth center in that respect, and to treat it as such, and then come up with the areas where they can put these type of businesses and keep them safe and, and get that same funding that you also desperately need from what we were hearing earlier. Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Good evening, Anna Boyd, long-term resident. I'm confused, and I'm wondering why we're worried about minor dance students getting into a dispensary and why minor dance students are getting out of the dance studios unsupervised, where someone's being paid to instruct them, where parents are leaving them. There's a real possibility that a student wandering outside of a dance studio could be abducted, attacked, hurt, killed, but I feel like it's highly unlikely that that dance student, leaving the dance studio unsupervised, is going to wander into a dispensary. And I feel like there's a piece missing here. How is a minor dance student who's being dropped off by a parent and being cared for by a biz, a paid business, just wandering out and into a dispensary? I feel like that would be the fault of the dance studio, or, I'm sorry, the fault of the parent. A dispensary has the responsibility of keeping a minor dance student out of the dispensary. However, they don't have the responsibility of keeping the dance student supervised inside of the dance studio. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Next, please. If you want to speak, I want you to come over to this side of the room so we can keep the flow going.
Hi, I would just like to preface this with, I don't actually use cannabis products. However, I'm curious what the parents of the dance students think of a cannabis user. I think the reefer madness stigma has seriously got to go, because cannabis is coming to Lompoc, and you have got to not fear a cannabis user. You would be surprised, once you got to know your fellow townsman, how many people do use it, and you would never think, you would never think anything bad of them. I don't think there's any danger of your children being absorbed by reefer madness. However, when we look at the national climate right now, and Jeff Sessions, who is in charge of the Department of Justice, he is doing the war on drugs, even though we know it doesn't work. What that means for us is, if we do include, or if we don't include dance studios, and so a dispensary sets up next to a dance studio, and for some reason, someone in the dance studio sues, it will go to the state level, because the rule is at the state level. If that happens, we are bringing a lot of attention from the DOJ right here to Lompoc, and what that will mean to not only the cannabis dispensary that's being sued, but it will bring attention, unwanted attention, to the rest of the cannabis businesses. So I really think that should be an aspect that's looked at. I do not think a cannabis user is anyone to fear, but what I do think is the lawsuits that could potentially arise from this and the DOJ getting involved and wiping out our cannabis businesses altogether. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Anyone else?
My name is Angela Mill. I'm a resident of Lompoc and the owner of the Classical School of Ballet. Our school has been providing classical dance training for over fifty years in Lompoc. In two thousand and three, we purchased property in the Old Town Commercial District, and my husband, Mason Mill, built a custom dance studio. We're located at one twenty-four South J. We are here to support the council in confirming that dance studios that teach children are, by definition, youth centers. Our school, which instructs mostly young children, certainly does fit the legal definition of youth centers as defined in Proposition sixty-four. We didn't name this ourselves. This is in the proposition. The city attorney, through his research, also believes all five dance studios in Lompoc fit the criteria of youth center. Defining these five dance studios as anything other than youth centers would defy the legal definition. Proposition sixty-four requires a six-hundred-foot buffer zone between cannabis-selling facilities and public or private schools, daycares, youth centers, or other facilities dedicated to children and teenagers. If the council ruled contrary to the state definition and the recommendations of the city attorney, it would open the door to cannabis operations next door to dance schools or other places. We have had overwhelming feedback from the parents of our students that if cannabis facilities were located close to our studio, they wouldn't have joined and still may choose to pull their children from our school. A business selling drugs near our studio would be detrimental to future enrollment. I brought a petition with signatures from many of the parents and from other concerned citizens. There's over a hundred, and I'm sure I could collect more if you would like me to do so. I was not at the original meeting, but I did write a letter. I was teaching that night, but I didn't, I recently found out this came up again, and so that's how many signatures I collect in a very short time, and many, many people are on spring break. That's why I'm here tonight, but that's why some people that wanted to come aren't here. They're gone on vacation. The youth center definition is a vital part of Prop sixty-four and is written into the law for purposes of creating a buffer zone between establishments where young children or teenagers frequent and businesses that operate in the cannabis trade. Our present here tonight is not to oppose the legal right of individuals to set up their cannabis-selling operations. I have no judgments towards these businesses, but rather to enforce that the city should proceed within the legal guidelines set forth in the Proposition sixty-four. The reason there's a legal precedence or law set against exposing young and questionable children to the drug culture is because many people, unfortunately, will not make decisions based on a moral or ethical ground of what is best for children. I hope our city council will choose what is best for the youth of Lompoc. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am.
Good evening, Mayor and Council members. I believe in the safety and well-being of the children in our community. I think that's why we're all here. At the same time, I also believe in common sense. While we allow liquor stores on every corner with booze next to candy, the reefer madness crowd would like you to believe professional-run cannabis stores, the most highly regulated in the entire city, are going to lure children into them. The fact is, they couldn't make it past the front door. This reefer mania seems to be a threat from storefronts, on opposite blocks, across the street, a thousand feet away, but no matter how we slice it, they don't want the stores here. That's reefer madness, not common sense. Common sense doesn't say children at four hundred feet are buying cannabis. Common sense doesn't say children at a hundred and two feet, forty feet, or six hundred. It's an arbitrary number. The fact that we've engaged our neighbors and presented security plans to improve neighborhood security, that's a fact. The fact is, our security plan is agreed to actively improve and address homelessness, transient, and open drug use currently happening in these centers. Without getting into details, there are also creeps watching the girls, and we intend to put a stop to this. While everyone's concerned about security, I believe, and our neighbors believe, we're improving that. And I think that isn't as important as anyone's else's opinion of cannabis centers create crime or problems of that nature. While the reefer madness crowd is worried about someone seeing a cannabis store, we're making active improvements for security in our neighborhood. We've also engaged in this conversation for roughly eighteen months now. We've worked with the council to create a safe and comprehensive ordinance, and it hasn't been done by showing up for one single evening. With cannabis as legal as a pharmacy, I find it offensive these legal businesses are called drug dealers. The undefined ubiquitous definition of dance studios is overreaching and without factual basis. As written, I could open a studio for one hour a week, serving children, and have protection under the city attorney's interpretation. I think most of us can agree that was never the intention of Prop sixty-four. How a dance studio opened part-time for minimal hours can affect the business within blocks around it seems illogical and overreaching to me. Locations are quite limited already, with the majority of the city's retail already being buffered. If you look at the map and educate yourself about it, that's a fact as well. This definition is refined in many large cities and most closely in Garden Grove, or Grover Beach, excuse me. These cities have not considered private dance studios as sensitive receptors. Beyond the political motivations, I'm not sure why Lompoc would creatively do so. The reefer madness crowd simply doesn't want cannabis, but sixty percent of Lompoc has voted otherwise. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Anyone else?
Good evening, Mayor, Council members, residents. My wife owns a Classical School of Ballet, and I've heard a couple speakers talking about being concerned about reefer madness or kids wandering in there. That never came to our mind in our opposition to having a store in close proximity. It was, it's more of a, it's more of a visual representation of what it is. In, in my mind, you know, having a school where youth or children are and having a store that sold liquor or anything, anything that's adult, in that close proximity, to me, just doesn't seem like the mix. You know, I understand that with all the buffer zones, you know, perhaps six hundred feet does wipe out a lot of area, but I think there needs to be enough visual difference that it's not like, here's an area where kids are, and, oh, right here, here's an adult, you know, substance place. You know, we don't put liquor stores right next to a school. There's a buffer. I don't know exactly, maybe it's a thousand feet or something, but there's certainly buffer zones for different, you know, we don't put industrial right next to residential because of certain concerns. I think this is that same thing. We are not worried about kids wandering out of schools and wandering into a cannabis store. That's just not part of our concern. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Anyone else?
Mayor, City Council, I wouldn't mind just putting a couple of minutes in here to talk about my thoughts as your police chief. So this weekend, we had two kids jump over a fence on the two-hundred block of I that ripped some marijuana plants. We spoke about that in the past. The neighbor decided to try and detain these young men and got in a fight with one of them and stabbed and sent to the hospital. So my perspective is, my concern is that, I'm not worried about the kids going in the store. I'm actually kind of pleasantly surprised at some of the security measures that I'm hearing about, because that, that definitely has to happen, and I'm glad that folks that are probably going to go into the business will have that difficult of a task to get in to buy the cannabis. My concern is the opportunists, and, and most criminals are opportunists, and they're going to go to where they could victimize people. And so if you go online, you're going to see a lot of crime occurring in dispensary parking lots and adjacent to them. I, I'm, that's not a judgment call on the operators. That's not a judgment call on the people going there to purchase. This is an infant industry, and it's, it's going to have some growing pains, and I just am concerned about those growing pains spilling over into the youth there, they're dancing. So, thank you.
Thank you, sir. Anyone else?
Can I ask the chief a question?
Sure.
Is there a distance that you think that dance studios, do you think they should be treated the same as a school, or do you think there's a distance that could work?
I don't think it should be in the same shopping center. I don't think it should be in proximity.
And what's proximity, you mean next door, or? I'm just thinking, some of these have three or four bars around and within the six hundred foot right now.
Right. Well, that's, that's an interesting comment, because our alcohol establishments are very regulated, and, and we have a say in what happens in those. We, we don't know what's going to happen in the marijuana industry, so we're, we haven't even started yet, so I'm just concerned. I'm not trying to sway you one way or the other. I'm just trying to say, it is a concern for us, because I'm trying to keep this town safe.
I know, I know where.
And I don't, that's, that's, you know, distance, I think it is arbitrary if you say sixty feet, a hundred feet, two hundred feet. I just think... I just think it should be very thoughtful, whatever you come up with. I don't have an answer to that. I don't, I just don't think it should be, the kids shouldn't be waiting for their mom and dad right next to the store because there might be somebody else waiting for their next victim.
And, and I know one of the, one of the studios actually commented that they didn't have a problem with it because they, they did talk to the person who was looking and putting in the dispensary, and because of the increased cameras and the increased security and the fact that there was going to be full-time security there, they actually felt that the place would be more protected by actually having it there, and I don't, I mean, I, I, in, in that area there, there's a, there's a huge transient activity going on. In fact, just maybe a hundred foot away from there, I found a couple heroin needles today that were there that hopefully, you know, with security and cameras, maybe those people will push on.
Right.
And that's where I'm having a lot of problem with is, is the other uses, and the dispensary that has a full-time security, I think, maybe can enhance security, of course.
Right. Well, you know, I, I see both sides of this. I'm just trying to say, as the police chief, there are unintended consequences, and there are, there is a part of our society that they are looking for their next victim. We, we had a pretty bad assault this morning. We've had some stuff go on in our town that there are people, that's why I have a job, so I just, I'm concerned.
Yeah, me too. Thank you.
Good evening. Thank you, Mark Hashemala. So, a couple of concerns that I have about the chief's comments. We have a dance studio on, I believe it's F Street in Chestnut, that shares the building with a wine tasting room. So, the wine, we're not that well-regulated, I guess, as far as alcohol and next to the dance studios. So, they could literally be, like you said, coming out, waiting for their mom, and have someone inebriated walk out and get in their car, right, literally right next door. Lots of liquor stores and lots of, and again, it's really not the access, you know. Hopefully, I do want to start a cannabis business here in town, and I want to do it by regulate it, right, regulation and showing that we can do it the right way, you know, and working with the police and working with the community as we establish the right, the rules that no child would ever enter our dispensary. It's just not a possibility. They have to get through the front door first. It's not, it's not going to happen. We have the same concerns. I have four lovely daughters, two granddaughters, four lovely nieces. They all danced here at some of the studios. I do appreciate all the concerns. Again, the, it's, some, many, many people have mentioned the reefer madness. It's not seeping out our walls. At dispensaries, you're not allowed to consume. There will, there are lounges at some point that you might be able to consume, but at dispensaries, you cannot consume. So, there's no smoke pouring out, there's no, you know, there's nothing that's going to be affecting the children, at least in, in my dispensary. My concerns are for the community, my concerns are that we do this the right way, that we eliminate the black market. Exactly why we don't want people jumping fences and stabbing neighbors? Why would we not want it a professional building with security instead of people having to grow it in their backyards? Because that person would not have to grow it in his backyard if he had a place he could come purchase it from, and then that incident would have never happened. So, I appreciate the time. I know you guys have a lot to think about. It has been a long process. For a year and a half, we've been working on this. It concerns me that the, the community comes forth in certain, at certain moments. We've been working on this for an ad hoc committee, we've been working on this for a long time to come up with the right rules to make this effective for the community, to make this, and there's, for those that brought it up earlier, we, we didn't have a tax on it because we want people to come to town, we want the business to be established so we can get jobs and, and then maybe create something from there. So, I appreciate your time and concern. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Anyone else? Okay, seeing no one rise, we're going to close public comment on this, bring it back to the council. Discussion? Councilmember Rosborn.
I appreciate the ongoing discussion. This, as we admitted early on, this is a social experiment because we're all trying to figure out how we're going to deal with this. There are those of us on council that decided to treat it as a normal industry, treat it as if it was alcohol. At the same time, we have those in our community who are not comfortable with that concept, and there's a fine line we have to walk with respecting those in the community that don't appreciate us regulating a legalized substance. So, we have gone above and beyond many communities and put together a very good ordinance that is not restrictive, doesn't limit the dispensaries, doesn't limit their locations other than as defined by our zoning, and yet, when we identify something that is a youth center, the cannabis industry comes out and asks for more. You have been given a great deal. I ask that you respect our community that is trying its best to get over those that may still have reefer madness, and those of us who don't have it and aren't in fear of you being in our community, for once, show us that you want to be a part of it by respecting what the state ordinance says. The reason I chose to support dance studios as a youth center is it absolutely meets the definition. The definition doesn't say anything about hours open. It doesn't say anything about how often. What it says is, "Any public or private facility that is primarily used to host recreational or social activities for minors, included but not limited to private youth membership, organizations, or clubs, social service teenage club facilities, video arcades, or similar amusement park facilities." For those of you who already signed a lease knowing there was a dance studio there, that's on you. That's not my decision. It's not my job to solve that problem that you chose to engage because you realize they were there, you have talked to them, you have your letters of support. It's wonderful that you will provide additional security. My job is first and foremost to meet the letter of the law. This is what the letter of law says. We, as a council, agreed to that a month ago, and the idea that we're revisiting this and going into spot zoning and creating additional specifics in order to accommodate someone who didn't wait till they knew they were going to get a permit to sign a lease is not a problem I am trying to solve. I am trying to open the door to the community, to this industry. I welcome this industry. I'm disappointed we aren't having a local tax, given the 1.2 million dollars that we're losing because we don't have revenue coming in. And last week, or last council meeting, we had a presentation that said we could have had easily a hundred, maybe a million the first year, maybe three million, depending on what opened, and could solve our budget. But again, majority of council keeps making decisions that seem to be catering to an industry rather than treating it normally. So, again, I'm welcoming that this turns out well. I want to see everyone feel like this is not a bad decision that I helped lead, and I take full ownership on that. But I think there's some giving that needs to come back from the cannabis industry at this point because you've been given a lot by this council already with the kind of ordinance that you have. So, I still stand on where I stood last month. Dance centers qualify as youth centers, and I won't be changing my vote on that.
Any other discussion? Councilmember Mosby.
Yeah, again, the discussion that I had and the, the level that I was trying to interpret is the word that you said there was primarily used by, and when a facility is primarily closed, there's an issue that I have. But in the discussion with, and, and one of the movements I tried to make last time was that you had to have a twenty hours looking at a forty-hour work week, and that you had to be twenty hours used for youth, meaning that's a primarily used by youth. And I believe there was only one facility at that time with the, the city attorney's analysis. So, the key word that I was focusing on that time was primarily used by youth. And when a facility, some of these were only open a couple hours a day, I felt that it was primarily closed and not primarily opened by youth. But in discussing with other people in some of the facilities, not everybody's having the attitude, and as we understand, one of the dance facilities is right next to a, a winery without issue. And granted, like the chief said, we're, we're going in a, in a, in a direction that we really haven't tread before, and I know the discussion, I, I haven't heard anybody going to be, be building a building right next to this ballet studio, but I, I believe that if somebody's going to go to that level of complexity, I'm, I'm quite sure that there's other places they would go first. If you do look at the maps and the isolations that are out there, it's very, very, very limited for places to go, and I know that there's going to be intense security with all of this. And I know that the she, the chief is part of the overseeing authority on the permitting aspects of this as well. So, I'm the one who asked to bring this back for reconsideration. That was partially because there was a, a statement made that some public comment, I believe all public comment got to us, we have nothing, none of that came. That was part, part of what my reasoning was, but as well as that I felt that the, the word primarily used by youth was, why I brought it back.
Councilmember Vega.
I'd like to thank all the parents and the owners of the dance studios for speaking out. We definitely do. I have children of my own and grandkids, you know, I guess we have to respect that we're all love our kids and don't want anything to happen to them, so that's why we fully support our public safety officers here, police and fire, to make sure nothing happens to them. I think the intent here was to not be so restrictive to a point where everyone wants in and wants to deem themselves a youth center without any valid criteria. The fact of a dance studio being right next door to an operation, you know, that is a, a concern. I thought that before, when I proposed another alternative was to, for the buffer zones to be reduced from six-hundred feet to four-hundred feet, I thought was a fair, you know, fair option. From my research, it looks like other people have done that. I think in the initial, when the initial question came out, I think the city attorney said that we probably, there was no other people that have done this before, and that we could be at risk, which that's his job. That's his job to assess risk and to make sure that we're not jumping into quicksand, so to speak. But again, I think that would have been the alternative that I still am interested in, in having a dual buffer zone. I think that by, I think the thousand-square-foot is good for the, for the smoke, smoking lounges, but to reduce it from six-hundred to four-hundred square feet would still provide a safety zone, which is allowed by the state, that we, we can adjust this. So, again, I wanted to thank all the parents, you know, we're not going on deaf ears here, you know, I think that all the presentations by the cannabis industry saying that, hey, there's a lot of restrictions, they're spending a lot of money on security and everything. I think the choice here with the, the council here is, do we think it's, we want them right next door? That is a big question, you know. I think that the other question was that, hey, well, we have liquor stores and we have cannabis, but it's kind of unfair to throw in the liquor stores because they've always been there, and no one's ever raised a concern on the fact that they can go in and buy liquor or whatever. So, again, I would like to actually bring that up one more time to the council as far as the buffer zones. The town is so small that it does, it is very restrictive, and that's one of the reasons there weren't any restrictions put on how many businesses could come in because the maps kind of do it themselves. Thank you.
Councilmember Vega, are you, were you wanting to make that into a motion?
I would like to make the motion that the buffer zones be adjusted from six-hundred feet to four-hundred feet as an alternative here to where we're going.
Mr. Mayor, may I just ask a question?
Sure.
Is that a buffer zone for just dance studios, a buffer zones for schools, daycare centers, and all youth centers, or what?
I think the, it was a buffer zone for the entire city of Lompoc here.
So, for, it changed the six-hundred-foot for schools, daycare centers, and youth centers to four-hundred feet?
Yes, sir. That would be a, a motion that I would like to make if possible here, if I could get, get some support here. That would probably solve a lot of the issues here as far as the restrictiveness on the maps. We take care of our kids at the same time and the concerns of the parents and the dance studios.
Yeah, I think we'll actually have to bring that back because what was on the agenda was dance studios.
Okay.
So, we'll have to bring that back.
We could do that. Do I need to get a second and a third or something on this, or what do I need?
Well, let me get Councilman, Councilmember Mosby, were you going to second his motion?
I mean, I'd, I'd be willing to look at the map and see what the map did, I mean, wouldn't want to maybe to have this.
They're two separate issues, apparently.
Right.
According to him, but I'd like to bring it back for another part of our discussion.
Maybe we could just have the staff give us a map, bring it back and look at the map, and at that time, we could make a determination if we saw what the map looked like. So, maybe reduce it down a little bit, not just the motion to bring, have them come with a map.
Okay.
On that four-hundred-foot.
Okay, so Councilmember Mosby, or Vega, I think you need to withdraw your motion.
I'd like to make a motion.
Well, withdraw your motion.
Or withdraw my motion and make another one. Okay, so I withdraw that motion, and I'd like to make another motion.
Make the council request to bring it back.
Yeah, and a council request that we bring back the issue of the, the buffer zones from six-hundred feet to four-hundred feet, and if, if possible, we can get a map that would show the differences and bring that back for another agendized item.
Okay, and with that, he's going to need.
Get some support on that so we can take another look at it.
With that, he's going to need a second and a third.
I mean, I'd give you a second with that.
I'll, I'll give a third on that, but isn't Prop sixty-four already designates certain minimum sweeps?
Yes, it says six-hundred feet.
So, if it says six-hundred feet in the state law...
There, there's, just to be clear, as we've, we've had this discussion before, the state law seems to allow a city to make it less than six-hundred feet, but my strong recommendation to you is to let someone else, some other city, take that step, and some other city gets sued to decide whether that six-hundred-foot really can be limited or not. But it's your decision as, whether or not you want to follow that recommendation.
Councilmember Mosby, you still have the light on?
And it's been done other places, you know, they're, they're saying we're first in.
Okay, wait a minute. Councilmember Mosby, you still have the light on?
You know, the, I, let me retract my second then with what the city attorney's statement.
So, we do not have a second or a third on this. Okay, so your council request is not going forward. Councilmember Mosby.
Well, we, we still have the item that's at hand, that was the other ones, and that is the dance studio, and, again, reconsidering the, my vote in moving forward with the youths, the dance studios. And I tried before to make a motion, I don't know if I could get a second on it, that the, had the twenty-hour variable on it, I don't know if, I know that the city attorney had done a calculation the last time that it, they had, and again, primarily used by youth, you had analysis based on a forty-hour work week.
Yeah, I, I roughed something out last time based on the information that I had received, but I only received information of operating hours from three of the five facilities. We didn't receive it from all five, so I, I wouldn't be able to give you a definitive on all of them.
Well, reconsider my vote and, and consider the dance studios as written to not be primarily youth facilities and not be considered as youth facilities.
Okay, then if you want to make that a motion.
There's a motion.
Okay. Then I'll need a second. And that fails without a second.
Well, if he's reconsidering a vote, would it require all of us to revote then?
What I understand Councilmember Mosby be doing is trying to indicate that dance studios won't be considered youth centers unless they're primarily used for youth?
No, I'm just reconsidering as, as that dance studios will not be considered youth facilities.
Period. Dance studios would not be considered youth, okay. So, his motion would be to change the map and not have the map include any buffers around So his motion would be to change the map and not have the map include any buffers around any dance studios. Is that correct, Councilman Mosby?
Yes.
Well, last time, and I, I looked at it again, it's here in the March 6 staff report. We have, by going forward with this, it does not engage a whole lot of properties. And I used the, the example before of places where youth are for an hour. Anywhere around the high school could be considered a youth center from 11:30 to 12:30 when open campus. The dance studio typically, I'm going to assume dance lessons are an hour, hour and a half or so. So I, I'm going to retain my original vote and I will give you the second.
Okay, so just for clarification, the motion is that dance studios are not considered youth centers. Is that correct, Councilman Mosby?
Yes.
Okay, so we have a motion and a second discussion.
You are opening the door to litigation and a fiscal cliff we don't need to walk off. That is not a defensible position if we are taken to court by parents with a dance studio, by a dance studio. Standing with the state mandate, the, the code that exists, the 600 foot barrier and allowing other communities who have decided to play around with these laws, let them determine it. We can always come back and change this, but from the beginning, I have sat in a position of defensible and protect our community even while regulating the industry. And that's what that 600 buffer does for youth centers and a dance studio, again, whether it's open an hour or 40 hours, it is serving primarily youth. It shouldn't be about whether or not they're open 10 hours a week, 20 hours a week or 60 hours a week. It's about the fact that they are dancing and they are primarily youth, so that is a social recreational activity. Secondly, yes, you're absolutely right, Councilman Starbuck, the high school campus is considered a buffer zone because of the fact that it is primarily serving youth. So again, that's exactly what these buffer zones are designed to do. I cannot support changing this and, and playing around and opening the door to litigation. I understand other communities are doing it, I understand some have increased it and yet very few have reduced that. And it's, it's not an area I want to test or draw attention to in our community. So I, I can't support this and I think it's a bad decision.
Any other discussion? Okay, let's vote. And that passes 3-2. Okay, we're going to go back to item that had been pulled, item number E8, which is adoption of resolution 6170 parentheses 18, reestablishing fees. This is, this is the Mr. Panoni show tonight.
Sorry. So this, the item before you is actually being brought to you because I often reread the resolution on cannabis.
Hold on one second till they close the doors. Okay, and Ms. Galavan, can you ask them to keep the noise down out there? Okay, Mr. Panoni.
Okay, the reason this is before you is because I happen to reread resolutions and ordinances and when I reread the resolution that set up the fees for the cannabis uses, I noticed that it allowed for a return of the deposit that the cannabis applicant has to make when they file their application, even if the application and the license is granted. And I thought, well, the reason the city wants the deposit is because they want to make sure that they are able to recover their costs for implementing the ordinance that you adopted. So I thought it made sense to allow, to not have to give that deposit back during the time that the cannabis use was in operation. So I suggested deleting that provision from the resolution and that's why it's before you tonight.
Thank you. Okay, public comment.
Sorry, I didn't grab a second form, but I'll give one if you'd like one. Todd, Todd Mitchell, Grover Beach, Gamin, Mayor and City Council. You know, I'll, I'll abide by whatever rules you put in place. I've turned in cannabis applications in five different municipalities and all of them return unused fees because they are a direct fee for service. I think that's it. Thanks.
Okay.
Councilmember John Lynn. You know, I don't really care that it's cannabis. I think it's a matter of principle. If, as the city attorney points out, we don't have adequate fees or we need a deposit or we need to set another fee because this is a particular use that we believe is going to cost us money, then absolutely let's do that. Not a problem. If we, if we haven't charged the right fee, then we should certainly do that. However, we shouldn't retain something that's a fee when the funds exceed the cost. And we have that with development fees. We had a, I think it was a $3,000 fee that we deposited when we started to build the bike skills park. And it was a little late in coming back, it was three years later, but we got $2,300 back and that is as it should have been. And that's how it should be on this. So if we haven't, if we're not charging enough fees, let's raise the fees, but let's give back what we don't spend. Thank you.
Anyone else? Okay, we're going to close public comment, bring it back to the council. Councilman Starbuck.
Yeah, one of my big concerns on pulling this item was is the fee was developed on a cost of service. Well, suddenly it's not going to be a cost of service issue, but it would become a fee. And when you read through the fiscal impact, the last part of the opening paragraph says subsequent auditing of those activities. So is this suddenly you're prepaying for what kind of an audit? What are, what are we doing where all of a sudden we have to go? It makes no sense, it shouldn't be included in here. That's why I wanted to pull it. I, I don't think that, oh, well, it only cost us 8,000 to, you know, for this business to stand up, but we're going to keep the rest because we're going to come in and do an audit later. And I kind of question what our audit would be.
Any other discussions? I'll entertain a motion. Oh, Councilman Mosby?
The city attorney can, I mean, if, if we did an audit, we're allowed to charge for the audit?
Yes.
Okay. Is there, is there something else maybe that we should have in as a possible fee that you've, that, that maybe wasn't being charged that could be?
It's not a function of adding anything to the fee because the way the resolution is drafted is any costs that the city incurs as a result of the cannabis use, whether it's the application, the implementation, the operation or the whatever, the applicant or the business owner has to pay that fee. The concept here was to make it easier for the city to recover the fee than have to go try to chase the fee down. And so because there was already a deposit made, it made sense to me to have the deposit remain only if the business was in operation. If the business permit is denied or it's revoked, they get the remainder of the deposit back. If the, the idea of revocation is a possibility, and that is going to be a city cost, there's going to be a city cost that revocation, attempting to recover a fee from a person you just revoked a permit from is not going to be a slam dunk thing. It's not going to be easy. So having the deposit was to cover that kind of a fee as well.
So maybe a closure deposit, you're saying, is, is, is there an estimated number you think that might be?
No, I, I don't have an estimate of that.
And, and again, it's in the phase of when the business is running, there are different aspects of monitoring and auditing that the city will have to do, or inspections. And the way we have established this with the cannabis industry right now via the resolution is that we are, we are going to be charging them for the service as it goes in any of those phases. So that's why Mr. Panoni has suggested that we want to keep this fee open. However, if you're saying you would rather see costs, it sounds like I'm hearing you want to make sure we have cost of recovery. Is that correct?
Well, maybe I'm thinking what, what we're looking at is something like we do with deposits with utilities after we see that somebody is paying. I think after a year you refund the deposit or something like that, don't you, with utilities? If they have a track record of pay, do we?
But I think what we're saying is there's like an annual renewal for these licenses, there's, so there's, there are ongoing things. So I'm not finding the juncture, you know, where we want to close it off unless we want to.
What I was thinking of is if somebody had $2,000 or $3,000 sitting in a fund and you dealt business with them and you're billing as you go at the end of a year, you could say, hey, this client, this customer is paying, you, you can refund them their deposit. I know PG&E does that, if you have a year track record, they, and then you carry on.
Once you've established that working relationship and you know they're paying their bills.
Right.
Gotcha, that's what you're saying.
I mean, is that something would, would work as well, that if you had that after a year is, are you thinking there's more incurred potential costs somewhere down the road that we're not, we're not sure of yet because it's unknown?
Correct.
So it's an unknown where, I mean, I could, I can, yeah. Thank you.
Any other discussion? Councilman Starbuck.
Just to say, I, I kind of think that, you know, when you go in to have your utilities turned on, you are required to put a deposit. Any business in town, you get a bill, you pay your annual renewal. I could see it's a new industry, it's a whole new concept, so maybe just keeping what's left of the deposit for a year and then refunding after the year would be the thing to do. You wouldn't want to automatically take money out of their deposit to pay their business license, I mean, that's not the way anybody else does it, so.
Okay, I'll entertain my motion.
Can I, can I just a little bit more discussion? I mean, make, maybe we could go ahead and use this and, and bring it back after a year if you see something, see if it's working or not working and maybe what you thought was unknown could be locked up somewhere else. So maybe go this way, give it a try because I think what you're, what you're looking at is you feel there's some unknowns out there we're not sure of yet.
And, and I guess if we can just clarify that, the council does want us to cost recover on any of those items.
That was the intention, I believe, speaking for myself here, but I, so maybe, maybe we could go with this. I mean, I'd make a motion that we go with this and bring it back after a year and reassess this after a year, but go with the staff recommendation as written.
Councilman Starbuck.
Yeah, I, I would give a second on that, but I would just want to make a statement. Staff came up with the $11,900, I believe, for the deposit to, to step, stand this business up. Plus they're charging, asking for, if I'm not mistaken again, another $1,100 per investor in this. So you've already gone through and looked at what you thought was going to be cost recovery, so.
For the application process review.
Right, and that should have included everything from police to cameras to fire, to clerk, to, you know, the whole thing. So I, I'm saying we're going back on something that you've already done once.
We're not, we're not going back because as you recall, that policy and that resolution says, and if that deposit gets to $2,000, they have to put another $8,000 in, always keep it at between $2 and $8,000 because we aren't sure of what those costs are going to be.
Then why are we going to, why don't we have that worded here instead of just keeping everything that's left?
We do, that's exactly what we're, what I'm suggesting is that we'll keep the deposit and if the deposit goes below 2,000, then they have to do, put another 8,000 in, but if the deposit is at 3,000, they don't have to put any more money in because we're just following the way it was originally approved. The only difference is we're not giving the money back, the deposit back if they are approved as a cannabis user, use.
Councilman Mosby.
Again, the motion was to, to move with staff recommendation and come back after a year and reassess.
Yes.
Maybe that time they have a better wraparound, so.
That was your motion, Councilman Starbuck seconded that motion, so we're looking.
May I just ask a question? Do you want to add that come back in a year in the resolution or just have the motion say that?
Just have the motion say that.
Okay.
Okay, and that has been moved and seconded. Any further discussion? Let's vote. And that passes 4-1, thank you. Okay, council will now recess to a closed session and we will return sometime before midnight.
Should we vote now?
So we'll, we'll be back as soon as we're done with closed session.
I have, I have one more thing if I could.
Wait, in closed session, we have conference with real property negotiators, conference with legal counsel and another council for legal counsel. Councilman Vega, you had another item you want to talk about?
Yeah, if I could, I'd like to do a reconsideration of my vote on the salvation of the documents. I'd like to actually make another motion if I could.
Okay, so you, you want a reconsideration of your vote, okay?
Yes, sir.
So first the motion would be to reconsider that item.
Okay.
And then we'll need a second and either, at least three people saying will want to do, hear the reconsideration.
Okay, so I will second your motion. And now we need to vote whether we want to reconsider or make that, consider that motion, so we're going to vote on that. Okay, and that's 4-1. Okay, so make your motion.
I think what, what looks to be a little bit convoluted here was the fact that we have to, after thinking about this, to have an ad hoc committee to try and sort out which documents we want to save, I think it's going to be very difficult. I think if everything's digitized or things that aren't being digitized, I think that, I think we spoke about it before that as long as the documents that are scheduled to be destroyed must come, come back to council so that we can make a designation of whether they need to be saved or not or offered to the public, I think would probably save some time. Other than the ad hoc committee trying to sort out which ones you want to save, I think it could be endless if we had to go and pick and choose which documents we wanted to save and which not. That, that's, that's my motion.
Okay. City clerk, are you clear on the motion?
A little bit convoluted, you want me to repeat it?
No, so go ahead.
Okay.
In 50 words or less.
All right, I'm sorry, Councilmember Vega, are you just looking to remove the ad hoc committee now?
Yes, remove the ad hoc committee and then my motion would say if it came back to council, if they're scheduled to be destroyed, that they come back to council for an action item for the council to approve them being destroyed or other direction by council.
So, correct me if I'm wrong, but that is, that is a policy that's, goes on, so I believe your motion will be to accept staff recommendation.
Actually, it's, it's going down the decision tree, it's that the council doesn't want to adopt a policy to allow individuals to be able to request a copy. We won't have a new policy. What we'll do is if it's, if a document is not digitized, before it can be destroyed, it has to come to you on a list with a resolution that you have to approve.
Yes.
Okay. And I will give you a second on that. Councilman Mosby? Councilor Mosby.
Some of the documents, even if they are digitized, again, they won't be coming to us for destruction. Is that correct? Some of them are destroyed without letting us know.
Correct. It'll either be digitized or it'll come to you for approval of destruction. But if it's digitized, it'll get destroyed.
So what I'm getting at is the official hard book would get destroyed if it's digitized. We wouldn't have any say on that at all. So the history book gets destroyed.
Yes, I understand that.
Okay. Did you have anything?
I'm sorry.
Okay, any further discussion? Let's vote. And that passes 3-2. Okay. And now we are going to go into closed session. And we will return. And again, the closed session items are conference with real property negotiators, conference with legal counsel, and number three is council with legal counsel pending litigation. We'll be back.
Mr. Mayor, if I will.
Councilor Mosby.
Yeah, I'll be sitting out on the first item.
Okay. Okay.
Uh, Mr. City Attorney.
Thank you, Mayor. Uh, there were three items on the closed session agenda. All three were discussed, and on item two, there was a settlement approved, four to one vote, with Mayor Lingle voting no, on resolving a subrogation claim that was filed by Republican Demity for someone who was injured in a park, and the claim was filed for, um, settled for $106,000.
Okay, thank you. Written communications.
Nothing more than you've already received?
Okay. Oral communication, this is your opportunity to speak to us for up to two minutes on anything.
I'm praying for it.
You're praying, okay, very good. We need all the prayers we can get. Okay, we're going to close oral communication. Uh, council requests, comments, and meeting reports. Start with Councilmember Vega.
Uh, nothing to report.
Uh, Councilmember Moesby?
Um, one comment. In my reconsideration, uh, nobody took me to the woodshed as, uh, the mayor's, uh, friend made the recommendation. Your, your planning commissioner said, "Nobody took me to the woodshed," and I used my own knowledge and communications with the public to make my determination.
Okay, Councilman Starbuck.
No reports, but, uh, Ms. Calvack, one of the council requests at the last meeting was that we get a presentation on opportunity zones and what we're doing. Could we include that in the future council agenda items list there?
Sure, that will be coming back to you.
Thank you.
I'm, I'm sorry, uh, Councilmember. Those, that, that future agenda list actually comes to, from my office. I, I apologize if I dropped something, but you're welcome to email me, or call me, or stop by. Okay.
Councilmember Osborne.
I attended the, um, Home for Goods New Thunders Collaborative, and the primary discussion was about the potential for a sweep of the riverbed in Lompoc, and one of those first meetings that are planning with all of the different groups will be happening soon, and the entire North County and, um, in fact, most of South County is supportive of trying to do that in a way that doesn't just impact us, but impact all of the county with those, um, leaving the area. So I just wanted the community to know that that is still on the radar, and we still are working on it. And I attended this morning's pen, uh, yesterday morning's pinwells for child abuse, um, and I really appreciate the North County Rape Crisis Center for bringing that attention to the community.
Okay. And the only kind, the only meeting that I attended at city expense was on, let's see, March 21st and 22nd. I attended a Northern California Power Agency Commission meeting in Roseville. Um, I drove my own vehicle, the city paid mileage, and they provided a hotel room for me. And that is it. Anything else? Okay, with that, this meeting is adjourned to a regular, regular city council meeting on April 17th at 6:30 PM. Good night, thank you very much.